Okay. I'd like to call this meeting the Prince William County School Board to order. Oh, yes. Pursuant to school board policy 139, school board member participation in meetings by electronic communication. School board member Diane Ralston will participate in this meeting through electronic means from her home due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance. The clerk will so note it in the minutes of the meeting. A motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I have a second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. A train. Did it pop?
The vote is seven yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to the motion to enter closed session. A motion is in order. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. I move that pursuant Virginia Code 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter a closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with the superintendent and staff the resignation, performance, discipline, appointment, and release of specific employees, and to receive advice on related legal issues as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 A 1 and 8. Two, to consult with division counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation involving employment and educational matters as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 A 1, 2, and 7. Three, to consult with the division counsel regarding specific legal matters pertaining to school board policy 117 as provided by Virginia Code 2.2-3711 A 8 and 4. To consult with legal, with staff and legal counsel regarding the legal requirements and procedures for collective bargaining by school board employees, which requires legal advice and guidance as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 A and 8.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Jessie votes yes. B, are you putting it up? Take your time, that's fine.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return an open session in one hour. Okay. The Prince William County School Board will now reconvene in open session, and a motion is in order. Ms. Jackson, closed session certification.
Thank you. I move that pursuant Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of Prince William County School Board meeting of April 20th, 2022 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters were, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard or discussed or considered by the school board.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to the closed session. Action item 701, a motion is in order. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in the closed session.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay. Right. All right. Good evening, everyone. We are pleased to continue our Launching Thriving Futures focus to recognize several outstanding student athletes and coaches this evening. But first, we would like to recognize the many sacrifices of our military families as we celebrate April as the month of the military child. We are honored to be joined this evening by Colonel Michael L. Brooks, Marine Corps Base Quantico commanding officer, and Sergeant Major Christopher J. Adams. They are here this evening to help us recognize April as the month of the military child and accept this resolution from the board. Let me read that for you folks. The resolution dated today, April 20, 20, April 20, geez, oh man, April 2022. Whereas, the Virginia Board of Education recognized the month of April 2022 as month of the military child to pay tribute to the military families and their children for their sacrifices made and for their commitment and courage. And whereas, the Commonwealth of Virginia is a member of the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children, which addresses key issues encountered by military students, including enrollment, placement, attendance, eligibility, and graduation. And whereas, military-connected children and their families move every two to three years within the United States or overseas, disrupting academic routines and friendships. And whereas, military-connected children also serve their country by demonstrating resilience, perseverance, and cultural competency. And whereas, military-connected children provide unique and valuable insights on learning, friendship, service to others, and heightened national or global awareness. And whereas, Prince William County Public Schools provides military-connected academic and support programs through a Department of Defense Education Activity Partnership Grant to support the unique needs of military service members and their families. And whereas, military families in Prince William County include men and women on active duty service in the Air Force, Army, Coast Guard, Marines, and Navy, and the members of the Reserves and the National Guard. And whereas, Prince William County Public Schools serves 8,686 school-age military-connected children. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board and the Superintendent of Schools recognize April 2022 as the month of the military child and encourages all schools and offices to show enormous appreciation with activities to honor our students from military families. This is approved by unanimous consent by the Prince William County School Board on March 16th, 2022, which, which we approved last month. Okay. Okay. I will now ask my colleagues on the school board to step in front, oh, my gosh, I missed that. Moving on to our student recognitions, I'm pleased to introduce our Gainesville Magisterial District Representative, Mrs. Genwall. Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my honor to acknowledge state swimming champions from Battlefield High School. When I call your name, please give us a wave, so our audience here and at home can see you. So Camille Spink, right there. She's a champion in girls' 200-meter relay, girls' 50 freestyle, and girls' 100 freestyle. And we have Emma Hanam. Wave. She was part of the girls' 200-meter relay, state champion swim team. And Sophia Hyland. Also, girls' 200, sorry, 200 meter medley relay, meter relay, wow. And Jamie Cornwell. With the girls' 200 medley relay. So, good job, great job, fantastic job, everybody, especially on that relay team. Their coaches include head coach Jay Thorpe and assistant coach, and assistant coach Evan Brandt. So I'll give Coach Thorpe a few minutes to provide brief remarks.
All right. So first, I wanted to thank the board for this recognition. This is a great honor for us. I can speak on behalf of the entire team that we're really excited about this, and I can't thank you enough for this. So about a year ago, this same group of young ladies finished as the state runners-up, and this was a really great feat for our team, and the highest that we've ever finished at states. And while the team was really excited, and it was clear that it just wasn't enough for these young ladies. From the start of the season, these young ladies made it clear that their goal was to finish as state champions. During our season, we had our fair share of adversity, but each of these swimmers rose to the occasion to complete this goal. They faced great competition the whole season, and we couldn't have asked for a better group of student athletes. We are very proud of what they have achieved, and would sum it up by saying, mission accomplished.
Thank you. So I'm also honored to recognize our gold medalist, Evan Nichols. He will come forward. Evan is the youngest member of the 2022 USA Paralympic Gold Medal-winning sled hockey team, and a senior at Battlefield High School. Evan is continuing his training and hopes to play again for Team USA in the next Paralympic Games in 2026 in Italy. Evan began playing hockey at the age of 10, after his friend Alex encouraged him to play. Evan played for the DC Sled Sharks before playing for the Mighty Penguins based in Cranberry Township, Pennsylvania. After making the 2022 U.S. National Sled Hockey Team and participating in all of the intense development required, Evan continued to maintain a 3.4 GPA. Good job. Congratulations, Evan. It is my understanding that your coaches are not here tonight, as they live in North Dakota. But Evan, if you would like, you can make some brief remarks. Though first of all, we should clap for you.
Thank you very much. It's been a dream of mine to achieve this, and, you know, have it recognized by my county and my school board is a really big achievement for me. So, thank you very much for recognizing me.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Wall, and congratulations to our Battlefield High School athletes and coaches. I'm continually in awe of our student athletes. I will now turn it over to Dr. McDade to help conclude this portion of the school board meeting. After her remarks, we'll take a picture with our student athletes, and I want to remind the commanding officers, if they could join us back up here after we do the picture with the athletes, for the whole board to take a picture. I lost my nerve reading the resolution, and really, I was supposed to have the entire board up here. And then, and then, if you would indulge us, Colonel, you can make a couple of remarks after the students are completed, after we take our pictures. Okay. Dr. McDade?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I would like to thank our guests from Marine Corps Base Quantico, Colonel Brooks, and Sergeant Major Adams, for attending tonight to celebrate and recognize April as the month of the military child. Thank you to our school board members for acknowledging our military friends and families, as well as our outstanding student athletes from Battlefield High School. You are outstanding, and we are PWC's proud of each and every one of you. Thank you to our coaches for your tireless efforts in supporting and encouraging our young people, our parents who continue to support our interests of our students. And I also want to recognize and acknowledge the leadership of Battlefield High School, Principal Ryan Ferrera. Our principals are instrumental in making sure that the programming and activities are available for our students and supporting our coaches in their efforts, so that our students can continue to pursue their interests and hone their talents. So we're so excited to have such phenomenal programming across our high schools, including the high school we're celebrating tonight, Battlefield. And to close out this special part of our meeting, I do want to reiterate that we are aware of many state-level award-winning students across our division, across a multitude of categories, not just sports, but across many things like science fair, spelling bee, robotics, you name it. We have talent equally distributed across our school division, and we plan to continue to recognize all of our students and their coaches during the next several board meetings. So congratulations again, and thank you so much for continuing to represent PWC as well.
Wonderful. If I can please ask the Battlefield athletes and the coaches to come up to the front, and the school board members come down in front of the dais for some pictures. And then after we complete those pictures, I'll ask the commanding, commanding officers from Quantico's Marine Base to then join us for pictures as well.
On three. One, two, three. Another one. One, two, three. Good. One more. One, two, three. Great. Thank you. One second. On three. One, two, three. Another one here. One, two, three. And that's for good luck. Let's go one more. One, two, three. Good. You're good? Thank you.
Colonel Brooks, again, from the board and from our community, we want to thank you all for everything you do for the country and for our students and the great work you have. As you saw, the number of students we have is nearly 10% of our entire school division. And so, they mean a lot to us, and we can't thank you enough for everything you do. And we'd love to hear some comments from you tonight.
Well, thank you, and it means a lot to us as well. And thank you so much for wearing purple tonight. You look really good. Thank you so much. You know, since 1986, when then-Secretary of Defense, Mr. Weinberger initiated this, this occurrence, we've been doing it ever since. And it's, you know, we've been doing it internally aboard all installations, but now it's really nice to see that our communities are joining our effort. And for Prince Wim County to partner with us, and our relationship that's growing stronger every day, I really appreciate it. You know, 1.2 million active, or 1.2 million children belonging to active-duty members, 80% of those children are within public schools. And we put so much pressure on them to understand why their parents are deploying, why their parents have to, or why they, the family, have to move to, every two to three years. It's a lot to put on a child, especially when they're seeing their peers remain in place. And just the partnership that we have with our surrounding counties, especially Prince Wim County, relieves a lot of that pressure and makes the families that much more secure in their child's education. So again, thank you so much.
Wonderful. That was, that was a great Launching Thriving Futures focus this evening. At this point now, I have a couple things we have to do tonight, and the first is, we have to do a public hearing. So, we're selling some property, so I'll read you the script that we're going to do here. Public hearing, I'm going to call to order. I declare that a public hearing is now open on the subject of the sale of excess school board property and retention of proceeds received from the sale of the Ann Ludwig School at 14575 Potomac Branch Drive. Any citizen who has signed up to speak on this matter may do so at this time. Madam Clerk, is there any speakers signed up to speak this hearing, for this hearing?
No, Mr. Chairman, there are not.
Okay. Upon being notified that we have no citizens who have signed up to speak on this matter, I declare the public hearing closed on that matter. And that was one of our quickest. There we go. All right. Now, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. We will start with a pledge of allegiance. Ms. Sherry, if you'd like to lead us, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. We're moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. Ms. Jackson, a motion's in order.
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to the motion to adopt the consent agenda. A motion's in order. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I would just like to call special attention, and I'm pretty sure I can comfortably speak for everyone and say that we all appreciate teachers in the upcoming Teacher Appreciation Week, and it's nice, any opportunity that we have to be able to recognize them for all the hard work that they do, because they go above and beyond. At least, I can definitely speak for my Title I schools in my district, but I'm sure it's the same in every district across the county. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Wall.
I just wanted to also highlight National School Nurse Day, which is coming up. Nurses have been invaluable for us, especially the last two years. And you've taken a very heavy burden by being an extension of the Health Department in our schools, in addition to all of the regular school nurse duties, which are very heavy at times. And with everything that has happened in the last two years, I just wanted to highlight how thankful we are for our school nurses.
Ms. Jessie.
Hi. I just want to reiterate what Mrs. Williams, Mrs. Williams said earlier, that we really appreciate the teachers and the staff, and teacher aides also, and all of the certified staff that has worked so diligently and so, in such a, I guess, brave manner, and really in many respects during this COVID crisis. And we appreciate you, and to the nurses, one of my first loves, I know how hard you work, and I appreciate your filling out all the paperwork and principles also. So, thank you for all that you do. We appreciate you.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Great. Okay. At this point, it is time for citizen comments. Those citizens who've signed up in advance with a clerk may address the school board this evening when they're called up to the podium. The citizen comment period for regular school board meetings is limited to one hour, with the first half-hour reserved for comments on agenda items only, and the second half-hour for comments on agenda items or other topics germane to the operations and policies of Prince William County schools. Citizens signed up to speak on agenda items must speak to the agenda item they have identified, or they'll be asked to step down. We have one speaker on agenda items and four on non-agenda speakers, non-agenda items. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside. When you're called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and I'd ask the audience to hold back any applause or cheering, as we'd like to include that as proper decorum as well. Our first speaker this evening will be Jennifer Roberts.
Good evening, Superintendent McDade, Chairman Latif, members of the school board, and other Prince William County staff members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Jennifer A. Roberts of the Gainesville District, and I would like to share my thoughts about Agenda Item 13.07, Jewish American Heritage Month, which will be observed next month. When reflecting on her highly successful talk show that ran for 25 seasons, Oprah Winfrey said of all the thousands of guests with whom she interacted, "Every person wanted to know, did you see me? Did you hear me? Did what I had to say matter?" In essence, every guest sought validation and the confirmation that their very existence was valuable. Observances like Jewish American Heritage Month, Black History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, Asian American Pacific Islander Month, which is also observed in May, Native American Heritage Month, and others, present wonderful opportunities for all of us to recognize the significance and the contributions of people who are members of these valuable communities. But our attention to these community members and all that they represent should not be relegated to a day on the school calendar, reduced to a banner or poster in a school lobby that hangs for the month, or a smattering of fun facts on the morning announcements. The unique experiences of all these heritages should be inextricably woven into the culture of all Prince William County schools and the way that we educate all of our students. Some may say, we don't have time to do all that in school. I say, oh, yes, we do, if we choose to actively value all of our students and staff. This validation shows up in the content of the school curriculum that students must learn, the artwork that is deemed worthy of being created by students in art classes, the types of reading and writing projects that are assigned, the music that is sung and played, the field trips that are taken by our students, and the conversations we have each and every day in schools throughout Prince William County. The content of all these learning opportunities reflects what and who we value. I, along with other parents, educators, students, and community members, am committed to providing each of our nearly 90,000 students with an equitable education that shows them that they are in fact seen, heard, and valued. If you share in this commitment, please join us at our meeting next Monday, April 25th, at 7:00 PM at Ronald Reagan Middle School. Thank you.
The next four speakers, and they're happy, welcome to come and sit up front, would be Richard Jessie, Ken Nar, Diane Stinson, Pedrois Prater. Mr. Jessie.
My name is Richard Jessie. My address is on file. My topic today is the boundaries, and as I've spoken on this several times, the rationale for this is that I have worked with, for my wife, Mrs. Jessie, as an unpaid staffer for many years. I have actively assisted her and other board members in many of the boundary hearings since 2013. In most cases, the recommendations by the citizen boundary committee frequently are changed during the public hearings, or written inputs by citizen, or changes strongly suggested by the board members. There are also some complaints, although very few, that the selection process to be one of the citizens on the selection committee is biased and unfair. The revision that I'm recommending is that we move the process up to as early as possible, as soon as something is firm, that we are going to, to have a school, so that the realtors, the parents, can get a the parents can get adjusted to any changes that are going to be made. If you're going to move to a area sometime coming in, you want to know what schools your kids are going to. If the, so, as early as possible, this is helpful to the parents. In addition, I recommend that we sort of reverse the process, not to be non-transparent, but I don't think the need is there for the committee. I would recommend that the board members who are there, that are involved in the process, the one that's in the primary school in attendance area, that they be briefed by our division first, then they will hold public meetings. And those public meetings will have the opportunity for the citizen to address what the school board and the people are recommending, and then changes can be made. Oftentimes, the final meeting where a vote is being taken by the board, changes are made after all the input has been obtained, but it still changes at that final meeting. And the citizens do not have any final input on that. So I think this will help eliminate this, and I will send an email to all the board member and to the superintendent with some recommendation how it should be addressed. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ken Nar.
Ken Nar, the Gainesville District. Once the FY23 budget is passed, May and June will become the perfect time to make the necessary strategic moves to address the inadequacies of our county's commercial tax base. Previous boards have failed to implement the necessary steps to make the 35% commercial tax base a reality. Now is the time to build and supercharge the economic engine that will propel our schools forward. Dr. Lawrence stated a couple weeks ago, "We need to tax globally and spend locally." Prince William County should recruit and retain global businesses whose tax dollars generated, are generated throughout the world, not from our residents. It is time to lighten the tax burden on the Prince William residents and homeowners. The strategic, the strategy will generate the necessary revenue to create thriving futures for our African-American and Hispanic students, 56% of our student body who are currently underperforming their peers. English learners, special needs, and economically disadvantaged students are other subsets of our total student body that are underperforming. Students who fall into two or more of these categories will find current curricula, learning environments, and instructional strategies challenging at best. One-size-fits-all instruction and instructional materials will not connect with these student populations. We must fully invest in our students. It was interesting to hear, "We now invest the least, not the second lowest like last year, but the lowest on our students of any county in Northern Virginia." As the second-largest school system in the Commonwealth and the 34th-largest school system in the nation, we must do better. There are national and regional shortages of teachers, counselors, instructional assistants, nurses, substitute teachers, bus drivers, cooks, and educational staffers. This makes these career fields high-value, low-density assets. Being overworked and underpaid are the two most common justifications for these professionals leaving their jobs. Might there be a connection between four years of moderate raises and the lower attrition rate in our school system? We need hundreds of teachers every year. We must pay these individuals more and lighten their workloads in order to competitively retain and recruit the best of the best. Like it or not, six or seven of the top 25 wealthiest counties in the country are located in Northern Virginia. These are the counties we have to compete with for a finite pool of workers. It is time to take bold, aggressive action and eliminate our current inequalities and move this county and our schools forward. The financial investment decisions we make over the next two or three months will set the stage for enormous future gains for our children. If we truly appreciate the efforts of our educators, we should do what it takes to acquire the revenue to pay them appropriately.
Diane Stinson.
Chairman of the Board, members of the school board, and Dr. McDade, my name is Diane Stinson. I am a, my address is on record. I'm a librarian at Benton Middle School. April marks the celebration of School Library Month. I am here today with my library media assistant, Katie Rosellino, and two of my students to help bring awareness to just a few of the ways that libraries support our community. Prince William County librarians work hard to help our students develop the habits that will allow them to thrive as adults. We facilitate vibrant spaces that are used by students to think critically, construct new knowledge, demonstrate curiosity, and embrace the love of reading. As a librarian, I can go on and on regarding the amazing ways libraries support our community, but I would prefer you hear from two of our Prince William County students about what they appreciate most about the library.
Hello, I'm Sophia Cassisi. I love dogs, warm weather, and shopping. I have a brother, but no pets. I've moved around, and I've been overseas twice. Every time I move somewhere new, I have a new home, a new school, new friends, but the same library feeling. That feeling to me is feeling safe in a reliable and familiar space. The library has made me a resilient person. I can overcome my problems by thinking what my favorite character would do in a book, or just reading to relax. The library is filled with knowledge and culture that give me a different perspective and new ideas. That is why I think the statement, "Strong libraries build strong students," makes a lot of sense. Have you ever heard the saying, "Those who don't learn history are doomed to repeat it?" Well, the library holds so much history. It inspires history, too. After reading a certain book, people can be inspired to do great things. And the best thing about the library is, it's there for anyone and has something for everyone. So why not go to the library? There are countless of stories and never-ending knowledge waiting to be read.
Hello, my name is AJ Melvin, and I am here representing Benton Middle School. I am in eighth grade, and some of my favorite hobbies are playing basketball, soccer, and of course, reading. I have three sisters, and I love to travel. I've gone to many places, but one of my favorite places is the library. I have loved the library ever since I was a little girl, and my mom would take me to Storytime. Though I don't go to Storytime anymore, I still love to go to the library to read and hang out. My family always goes to the public library. In fact, the staff knows us by how many holds we always have. But I think it is also very important to have strong and good libraries at school, where students can come together and learn. I think that the library is a great place, open to everyone, where you can feel happy and safe. It is a place where you can learn and grow at your own pace, and where you can learn about topics that interest or intrigue you. The PWCS staff wants us to be able to take away skills that we can use in our life. One of the skills is being an innovator and visionary. The library has helped me embody the skill by teaching me how to ask questions and find the best solution to any problem I have. It has made me want to learn for the rest of my life. It has helped me understand challenges in this world and how to help change them one person at a time. The library has helped me in so many ways, and will continue to help people forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Wow. Pedrois Prater.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, school board members, Dr. McDade. I'm Pedrois Prater from the Niasco District. And the topic I'm talking about this evening is capital improvements. We can all agree that no child or teacher should be in an environment that is not safe, or one that makes it hard to focus on what one is in school for, which is to learn. So I'm talking about capital improvement projects. I think they're all good, if they're working for the benefit of the school, especially when they need something. But I was left with the questioning of, what if they don't? And so what sparked me to talk about this topic is, there were two contracts that were approved today in the western side of the county. One was for $12 million, the other one was for $12.5 million. I'm in support of it, but I got to asking myself about, what about the eastern side of the county schools, where the majority of them are aging? Niasco District, for example, when I looked at the numbers there, the average age of the, the schools there are 43 years old. So when you look at the capital improvement plan documents, there's a schedule. Those documents are driven by data, usually by the student housing, but that schedule is somewhere around a seven-year mark. These older schools sometimes need rebuffing before that seven-year mark actually hits. So I'm thinking about a school now, it's on the eastern end of the county, where the air conditioning needs to be replaced. But what are they doing? Because it's not their time. They're not due for that air conditioning unit to be replaced until 2025. They're patching it. So we know what happens when you patch air condition. You just kick it down the road. So how does that impact the students? How does it impact the teacher's pocket? The teachers are now purchasing fans because the air conditioning unit doesn't work. The principal at that school has also dipped into funding to purchase fans because the air conditioning at that school does not work properly. It meets the code, I want to be clear, it meets the code, but it's not working properly. So that brings me back to my first question. What if the scheduling does not work? How do we pivot as a school system to address those needs of that school on eastern side of the county, or other schools on eastern side of the county where they're aging out? Another thing is, another perspective is, at the end of the day, we as parents are most concerned with what's happening in the classroom. So for example, I want to know that students are being supported, and the curriculum is supporting the learning and development of the child, which brings me back again to capital improvement. We need to ensure that the school buildings that we're building are the ones that we have are supporting students, rightfully so, there's an increased focus on STEM. And so there, we need to do all we can, from kindergarten to 12th grade, to expose students along that pipeline. This one is a tip of a hat to Lily Jessie, Lori Williams, who spoke, spoke about this before, where we need more science labs, again, on the eastern side of the county. The older schools have not been retrofitted, fitted to provide science labs. It's a basic need. How do we make the best and brightest students that are coming out of, out of this county, if all the schools are not adequately supported? It's going to cost a lot of money. And I should, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Prater. No worries.
I have to go use the restroom, too. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Outstanding. All right. That concludes citizen comment time. Is that correct, Ms. Stinson? All right. We will now move on to, I think, are we moving on to student rep?
We are.
Okay. Tonight, we have Danya Sharifi, a junior who attends Gainesville High School, who's joining us on the dais this evening. Ms. Danya Sharifi.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, an amazing opportunity for being student representatives. Student are back in school after spring break, prepping for SOLs, AP, and IB final exams as the year nears closer to May. I encourage all teachers to make sure to pay attention and give mental support to students during this time, as this is definitely a stressful time. And I wish everyone good luck as the testing season starts soon. For our progress for pushing later start times, we have a survey heading out in the next week or two. And this is a survey specifically for students, parents, and a survey for teachers. It is important for us as student reps to make sure that all voices are heard. So once this survey gets released, I'm hoping that as many student responses can be contributed. From parents and teachers, we want to know your perspective. As Prince William County is a large county, and an hour push will be an important change that not only will affect students, but also our parents and teachers. So make sure to fill out the form. Each form is limited to only one response per individual, so make sure you take the time to fill the form. It should only take one to two minutes. More details about those surveys going to be presented later at the school board meeting today about specifics. So just know that the student reps have really been pushing for this initiative. We really want your responses so we can analyze community input. Additionally, it's Earth Week this week, as Friday's Earth Day. Previously spoken, the Canvas module with optional energy and environmental sustainability activities for schools celebrate Earth Week is available. The module has been shared with students, teachers to be used in classroom, and at home, students and families can also use this module to participate in daily activities through Earth Week. To access the Earth Week module from your student or parent Canvas account, you want to select Help from the Canvas menu, then select Earth Week Activities under Other Resources. To promote Earth Day through this Canvas module, be sure to follow at PWCS Energy Team, which helped create this module, and all media accounts, and use the hashtag #PwCSEarthweek, or hashtag #GoGreenPwCS, to show how you and your family have been going green this week. I also suggest that the county pushes for more large compost bins in each cafeteria to reduce lunch waste in school, and then the environmental clubs can really have their students be in charge of managing and raising awareness about compost. Specifically, if each school has a way to dispose of scraps that will become compost, a lot of the school food gets put to waste, especially items that can be composted, like fruits and vegetables. In fact, according to the Journal of Cleaner Productions, students across all grades waste vegetables and fruits the most, representing more than 50% of their food waste, especially even faculty members wasting about 43% of their vegetables and fruit scraps. The implementation of more compost bins, either onsite or offsite schools, can help reduce waste here in Prince William County. Thank you for your time today. I look forward to the responses from the school start time survey. As pushing back school start times have lots of benefits for students' mental health. Be sure to reach out to me towards email or through social media at PWCS Reps, discuss how you can get involved in letting us know your perspective, as I want to do my best at representing each student's voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharifi. Really appreciate that. We'll move on to superintendent's time. Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I am honored to share that Amy Scott, currently principal of Henderson Elementary School, has been named the 2022 Washington Post Principal of the Year. Ms. Scott was the principal at Rockledge Elementary School for 13 years before moving to Henderson Elementary School this year. Ms. Scott was featured in an article, Ms. Shaw, I'm sorry, Ms. Shaw, was featured in an article in the Post on Monday morning, and we will recognize her in an upcoming school board meeting. The American School Counselor Association recently announced the 2022 Ramp Schools. Congratulations to Sinclair Elementary School and Minneville Elementary School for their ramp designations. Ramp designations are provided to schools committed to delivering a comprehensive, data-informed school counseling program, and an exemplary educational environment. This year, only 69 schools in 19 states earned this recognition. The ramp designation is good for five years. This is a new designation for Minneville, and a redesignation for Sinclair. So congratulations to both of our schools. I am also absolutely thrilled to share that PWCS students experienced unprecedented results at this year's State Science Fair. Out of 16 categories, our students earned six first-place titles. Tony Bright, Armana Latif, and Gabrielle Ralston, who attend Colgan High School and the Governor's School at Innovation Park, earned the grand award and first-place prize with their project on concussion recovery in youth optimized using a comprehensive app-based program. Yes. Oh, wow. Rania Latif, also from Colgan High School, so I'm sure that right now, without looking, Dr. Latif is cheesing like a Cheshire cat. Rania Latif won first place in the animal sciences category. And Jode Sola Akinbi, and Comfort Ahajunwa, students at Osborne Park High School and the Governor's School at Innovation Park, earned first place in biochemistry, cellular, and molecular biology. And Gabriella Lacour and Anisha Ramakrishnan, who both attend Osborne Park High School and the Governor's School, and Alehanna Moreno, who attends the Governor's School, earned first place in microbiology. And we have more. Naaman Agarwal, who attends Patriot High School and the Governor's School, placed first in plant sciences. And Desmond Boykin, who attends Forest Park High School and the Governor's School, also won the grand prize at the 2022 National American Indian Science Fair. Due to our talented students and staff, PWCS will be sending six projects to the International Science and Engineering Fair. This is National Volunteer Week, and I want to express my appreciation for the thousands of volunteers donating their precious time and talents to support our students and staff. We appreciate your efforts to help in a variety of areas, ultimately improving our schools and community. This week is also National Environmental Education Week. The 52nd anniversary of Earth Day will be celebrated across our division on April 22. The PWCS Energy Management and Sustainability Team has developed a calendar of activities and teaching modules for our schools to use as a resource when recognizing the importance of protecting and preserving our environment. Next week is Administrative Professionals Week, and we will celebrate our committed and hard-working administrative and clerical employees. In PWCS, our administrative professionals help set a positive tone in our schools with their warm reception in our front offices. They also provide critical support to our division leadership in many ways, and I recognize that our success is dependent upon these outstanding individuals. I appreciate the work of each one of our administrative professionals, and I hope you will join me in celebrating them next week. Teacher Appreciation Week is quickly approaching. I hope our students, parents, and community members will join us in celebrating the selfless contributions of our teachers, May 2nd through 6. I know our teachers appreciate a variety of expressions of gratitude. Also, watch our school division and school social media platforms, as we will be celebrating our wonderful teaching staff throughout the week. as we will be celebrating our wonderful teaching staff throughout the week. My report this evening will conclude with two presentations. One report includes the third quarter 2021-22 data update, and the second report is a school start time overview as we are exploring this concept. Dr. Jennifer Casada, Director of Research Accountability and Strategic Planning, will share the third quarter 2021-22 data update. Dr. Casada, can you please come forward?
All right. Good evening, Chairman Latif, Vice Chair Jackson, school board members, and Dr. McDade. Thank you for the opportunity to present an update on student performance. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an update based on data from the third quarter, which ended on March 31st. Tonight, I will cover the following topics. Enrollment, current enrollment for in-person and virtual students. Absence data, looking at chronic absenteeism. Elementary performance, to include grades and reading performance on the HMH Growth Assessments. Middle school performance, to include grades, failing course analysis, and reading performance. And high school performance, to include grades, failing course analysis, and an analysis of dropped courses. And finally, we'll include a discussion of exclusionary discipline. Before we start, I want to remind everyone of the context we've shared in each of the previous updates. In terms of virtual and in-person comparisons, they're included in a few of the analyses. It's important that we use caution in interpreting data for virtual students, giving the small numbers of students at each level. And then second, by way of reminder, PWCS grading policies follow a standard space grading approach. Since the focus is on students mastering standards and content, the policies allow for grade remediation and replacement. As a result, third-quarter grades may be amended in the future. As a note, some second-quarter grades were amended after we presented to you in February, which would explain variations in the numbers showing now for first and second quarters compared to in February. Before we dive into performance, we need to take a look at student enrollment. This table includes enrollment at the end of the first, second, and third quarters. You can see that an overall enrollment increased slightly. You will also see that virtual enrollment decreased slightly each quarter. At the end of the third quarter, virtual students made up 2.1% of the PWCS population, down from 2.3% at the end of the second quarter. The table also includes the breakdown of enrollment by level and by student group. You can see that high school continued at the lowest percentage of virtual students, and middle school had the highest, but all levels showed decreases. For this update, we're including an attendance update that uses the chronic absenteeism calculation. This looks at the percent of students absent 10% or more of membership days. That means the days basically schools are in session. For context, through the end of the third quarter, Prince William County had 128 membership days. So students enrolled all year, who have had more than 12 absences, would be flagged as chronically absent to date. At the end of the school year, Prince William County should have 176 days, because we had some closures. So students enrolled all year would need more than 17 days absent to be considered chronically absent. Overall, 18% of our students meet that chronic absenteeism threshold thus far this year. As a reminder and important context, this includes both excused and unexcused absences, because that's how the state calculates it. These numbers are up slightly from previous years, not looking at 2021. And in 1920, just for context, a total of 13% overall of students met the chronic absenteeism threshold at the end of the year. We'll now spend a few moments looking at elementary student performance. First, we'll look at grades in the core subjects for students in grades three through five. You will see that the vast majority of students are earning grades of B or higher. Very few students are failing core subjects at elementary school. And this time, this slide breaks out reading, language arts into reading and writing performance separately. The next slide looks at the distributions for third quarter by virtual status. Again, it's important to use caution in interpreting the data for virtual students, as well as in comparisons due to the small numbers of virtual students and the vast difference in the counts between in-person students and virtual. Again, just like in the last quarter, while the distributions show the majority of students receiving grades of B or higher, grade distributions for virtual students tend to be more at the extremes than for in-person students. All right, new to this presentation is the inclusion of the HMH Reading Growth Assessment data. These are the benchmark assessments that are aligned with the Language Arts textbook. Assessments have been administered across PWCS so far at two points in time, in a beginning-of-the-year window and a mid-year window. Just note that students in grade two were not systematically assessed with these assessments until the mid-year administration. So the chart shows a couple of things. The count of students reading above grade level, on grade level, and below grade level, along with the percentage of those students reading on or above grade level. The data are presented by grade level as well as by student group. The far-right column also shows the change in the percent of students at the on-or-above-grade-level standard from beginning of year to mid-year. All groups showed increases, with the largest percentage point increases shown at grades three and four, and for students with disabilities, our English learners, our Black students, our Hispanic students. It's important to note a few things about these data. The grade level performance standards, so what constitutes on-grade level, above-grade level, et cetera, are defined by HMH using their nationwide data. And in addition, preliminary local analyses conducted by our testing office staff have found strong correlations between these assessment scores and the Virginia Growth Assessment scores from the fall. So here's some takeaways from elementary school. Grade distributions have been relatively similar across quarters, and the HMH Growth Assessment data are provide some promising information about the growth students are making in reading during the year. Now, we will move to middle school data. The next three slides show the grade distributions by subject for first, second, and third quarter. So this one shows you the grade distribution by subject for the first quarter. Then second quarter. Spoiler alert, they're pretty similar. And then in the third quarter, here are the distributions by subject. Across the board, slightly higher percentages of students did earn eight grades of A in the first quarter than in the second and third quarter. Across quarters, the highest percentages of As were awarded in Health and PE and Fine Arts, with the lowest in Language Arts and Mathematics. As in second quarter, the highest proportion of F grades were awarded in World Languages. The next two slides, a look at the proportion of students passing all classes, failing one class, and failing two or more classes by quarter. So overall, at the end of third quarter, 83% of students were passing all courses, which is down slightly from the end of the second quarter. And the proportion of students failing two or more courses increased slightly, from 6.5% to 6.9%. Now, this slide also breaks down this performance by virtual status and also by student group. And you'll see that English learners, students with disabilities, and Hispanic students were failing courses at higher rates than the division average. Further analyses are being conducted to examine the performance of English learners by level to best understand the pattern, since English learners represent a very diverse group of students from both varying language backgrounds as well as English proficiency levels. Similar analyses will also be conducted to break down performance by primary disability for students within special education. This next slide is another way to look at the data that we introduced with our second-quarter presentation. Let me take a moment to explain it. This slide shows how students did in terms of failing courses at the end of third quarter based on what they were doing at the end of second quarter. The blue bars represent those students who were passing all of their courses in second quarter, and then what's happening in third quarter. So overall, 92% of the students who were passing all courses in middle school in second quarter were still passing all courses at the end of third quarter. And conversely, 8% of those students who were passing all courses at the end of second quarter were now failing one or more. The gray bars show those students who were failing one or more courses at the end of first quarter. Of those, 35% were now passing all courses, and 65% were still failing at least one. As with elementary school-
Just go over that slide a little slower. That's a tough slide to understand.
Okay, sure. So if you look again, if you look at, the blue represents, so if you think about students who are passing everything at the end of second quarter, the blue breaks it down. The first, the tall bar, shows that 92% of them were still passing everything, right? And then you see, if you look at, there's 6%, the pretty small blue bar in the middle, so 6% of them who were passing everything at the end of the second quarter are now, were now failing one course at the end of third quarter. And then 1.5% of them were failing two or more courses, okay? And then if you look at the gray bars, on the left, the one that says 34.5%, that means students who were failing one or more courses at the end of second quarter, over a third of them are now passing everything. So that's a positive, right? So there, 35% of students who were failing courses at the end of second quarter are now passing everything. So that's an improvement. And then you see that, you add it together, 65% of them were still failing one or more course. And we'll do the same thing again with high school, and I'll talk about it, I'll walk through it again. As with elementary school, the HMH Reading Growth Assessments were administered to students at middle school. And they were administered, again, at two points in time, beginning-of-year window and middle of year. And the chart shows, again, those students reading above grade level, on grade level, and below grade level, along with the percent of students reading on or above grade level. Again, same student groups and by grade level as for elementary school are shown. Again, all groups showed increases, in that far-right column, of percent of students scoring on or above grade level from beginning of year to mid-year, with the largest increases shown at grade seven. And for our students with disabilities, our English learners and our Hispanic students. And again, as we noted for elementary school, the grade level performance standards are defined by HMH. And again, the preliminary local analyses did show the same kind of strong correlations between these data at middle school level with the Virginia Growth Assessment data from the fall. Here's some middle school takeaways. So again, the overall percentage of students who were failing two or more courses at the end of third quarter is significantly lower than it was last year, right? So nearly 7% of students were failing two or more courses, but that's compared to 18% of our students in 2020-21. Again, course failure rates for some students, our English learners, our students with disabilities, and our Hispanic students were higher than division average. Again, however, the failure rates for these groups are lower than they were last year. And back to that slide with the blue and gray bars, over 92% of students who are passing all courses in the, that should say, second quarter, were still passing them all in the third quarter. And finally, higher proportions of students were reading at or above grade level on the HMH assessments at mid-year than at the beginning of the year, showing some growth. The next several slides focus on high school data. For high school grade distributions, data are included for first semester and then for third quarter. So this first slide shows you the distribution for first semester, so the combination of first and second quarter, the semester grades. By subject area, the same distribution as we showed for middle school. And then you can compare that to third quarter. The distributions for first semester and third quarter were very similar. And as in first semester, the highest proportion of As were awarded in Fine Arts and Health and PE, with the lowest in Mathematics, Science, and Language Arts. And the highest proportion of F grades were awarded in Mathematics. This next analysis is the course passing and failure rate analysis. The proportion of students passing all courses was similar in the second and third quarter. However, with a slight increase in the third quarter to 67.1%, up from 66%. So comparison of these numbers by virtual status shows some slight differences at third quarter, with a slightly higher percentage of in-person students passing all courses. Again, use caution in interpreting those virtual numbers. Again, like on the other slides, it includes a breakdown by student group. As at the middle school level, our English learners, students with disabilities, and Hispanic students were failing multiple courses at higher rates than the division average. And as with middle school, further analyses are being conducted to examine and explore the performance of English learners by level and by primary disability for students within special education. And here we go again with that graphical slide. We looked again at how students did in the third quarter based on how they were doing at the end of the second quarter. So again, the blue bars represent those students who were passing all courses at the end of second quarter. So overall, 88% of students who were passing all courses in the second quarter were still passing all courses in the third quarter. And conversely, 12% of the students who were passing all courses at the end of second quarter were now failing one or more. Now again, the gray bar shows those students who are failing one or more at the end of second quarter. And of those, 26% were now passing all courses, with 74% still failing at least one quarter. It's important, I'm sorry, at least one course. This analysis does show an improvement from second to third quarter overall, when the percentage of those students passing all courses from first to second quarter was 85% still, and this went up to 88. So the final high school performance slide is included as a result of questions during the second-quarter presentation. There was interest in examining not only students failing courses, but how students were dropping out of courses in addition to that. So this chart shows, by subject area, changes that students made to their course schedules, to include dropping courses completely, dropping to a lower-weighted course, like from, you know, an AP or IB-type course down, or moving to a parallel-weighted course. So the final two columns look at the proportions of students, proportions of course enrollments that changed. Overall, the highest proportions of change as percentage of course enrollment occurred in mathematics, where there were 1,283 total changes, representing 4% of course enrollments that changed at all. And then 605 of those were some kind of a drop, either a drop completely or a drop to a lower-weighted course, which represented 2% of those course enrollments. And this is information that's showing from the beginning of year through the end of the third quarter changes that occurred in the student schedules. Okay, the data for high schools show that the proportion of students failing multiple courses remain a cause for concern, but the course failures are down in third quarter from second quarter and compared to last year at this point in time. You can see that the percent of students failing all, failing two or more courses at third quarter is significantly lower than last year. Course failure rates, again, for our English learners, students with disabilities, and Hispanic students are higher than division averages, but are also lower than last year. And then 88% of our students who were passing all courses in the second quarter were still passing all courses in the third quarter, which is up from 85% at the end of second quarter. And finally, as I just shared, of students dropping or transferring out of classes, the highest proportion was found in mathematics. The final data slide tonight looks at exclusionary discipline trends this year as compared to 2019-20. Exclusionary, it threw three quarters, right? And I remember back when the pandemic started, that coincided pretty closely to the end of the third quarter, so the comparison point in time works. So exclusionary discipline, by way of reminder, is when students are removed from instruction, and it would include in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and any expulsion. So the chart includes counts and percentages of students receiving one or more exclusionary discipline consequence overall and by student group. So you can see, the far-right column does a calculation comparing what 2019-20 looked like and 2021-22 looks like. And you will see that trends in this year parallel very closely those trends found in 2019-20, with 3% of students overall receiving one or more exclusionary discipline consequence. Percentages by level and student group can be compared to the overall percentage to look at patterns. You will see that middle and high school have higher proportions of students receiving exclusionary discipline than at elementary school. And among student groups, you will see that students with disabilities and Black students have the highest proportion of students receiving exclusionary discipline. But you see across the board, the pattern is nearly identical to 2019-20. The final two slides talk about next steps. In terms of next steps, the first few all reflect some deeper analyses that are going to occur. First, the testing office will conduct in-depth statistical analyses this summer to compare the HMH Reading Growth Assessment data from all three points in time in which they're given to SOL data. These analyses will inform plans for assessing student performance in reading in 22-23 using the HMH assessments and the Virginia Growth Assessments. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, deeper analyses of the course failure rates for English learners will be conducted to look at patterns by English proficiency level and for students with disabilities by primary disability. These analyses inform instructional plans and strategies. Discipline data will be analyzed at both the school and student group level. These analyses inform the evaluation of efforts to provide appropriate behavioral interventions for students. And finally, students who are struggling continue to be provided support through interventions implemented as part of the unfinished learning plan. Given that mathematics is a priority area of need in the data, several next steps related to mathematics are included. The first is that Prince William County will continue to implement the unfinished learning plan with fidelity, and that plan incorporates targeted professional learning to strengthen core mathematics instruction. Second, Prince William County is increasing high-quality resources in Canvas that include interactive student lessons. Prince William County is promoting mathematics competitions to engage students in mathematics in grades three through eight to include MathQuest, Game of 24, and Virtual MathQuest. And finally, summer school mathematics instructional support for students and families includes both remediation support as well as enhanced STEM enrichment opportunities. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide you with this update.
Dr. Latif, if you or any of the board members have questions, we can take those questions now, along with Dr. Casada, myself, and Ms. Rita Goss. We're prepared to answer any questions.
Everyone's got their hands up. I saw Lori first, and then I'll go to Ms. Jessie and Mr. Wilk.
Thank you. I'm going to try to keep it brief. I noticed a lot of the comparisons stated like in comparison to last year, but I was wondering if we could do something that looked a little bit more on trends for the past couple of years? Because one statement will say, for example, it'll, excuse me, it'll say that the- Because one statement will say, for example, it'll, excuse me, it'll say that the, let me try to find it real quick, so I'm not quoting something incorrectly. Like the overall proportion of students failing two or more courses third quarter is significantly lower than 2020 to 2021. And then the next one will talk about the division average range, right? So I'm looking for something a little bit longer-term comparison, I guess the most appropriate way to say it, because it's really hard to judge during a pandemic, as well as other crises that were going on, I think, how well the students were doing, as well as the fact that it's almost sort of, to me, another compounding issue for staff, right? Because I think our staff did an excellent job trying to relearn their job multiple times while teaching kids. I'm not sure if that's really, I think it's a necessary comparison, but I don't think it's, I think the scope is too narrow to really judge what we're looking at. And then I also wanted to, if you could speak a little bit to the fact that some students are also in multiple categories, right? Because you could have a student who is in the learning disability category, but also maybe English is a second language, or also Hispanic too, when we go over these slides, to just sort of make note of that, so the public is aware, and it's not just looking at like, all across the board, students with disabilities without the recognition, especially in our smaller groups, that that one student could be in multiple groups, right? Because that makes a difference for people who are like number happy people, I'm still getting there. And then also, what, what are we doing? I, I know that there's a, at the end, you talked about student discipline, but what are we really doing? Because our student discipline numbers for Black and Hispanic students still seem very high for the population of the student groups. So that tells me that there's still some retraining that needs to be done for our adult staff as well as our students. Because i- if they're being singled out, I can't, I find it very hard to believe personally that our Black and Hispanic students cause the most problems by comparison of their peers, especially the way that our school division is so diverse, and we're not, like, we don't have pockets of people here, people there, that are in different environments or exposed to different things. So I find it, I think we need to be talking about that and having a larger conversation. Because while the, the discipline rates have decreased, it's still disproportionately high, and unacceptably so for those student groups. And I know that it also changes too, because in the past, and I don't know how accurate this is, because we haven't seen this in a while, but for example, in certain areas of the county, Asian students have represented a disproportionately higher rate of disciplinary issues in one area of the county versus another. So if we could start looking at some of that data, because I know going through a pandemic, going through other crises we've had in this nation, that impacts our students' mental health, as well as our staff's mental health. And sometimes old biases or aren't addressed, or they come back up. And this is not a negative thing, it's just a reality of the situation. So I know we're, we talked, I've expressed a little bit about that when it comes to like dress code perceptions, and having multiple generations in a school building, and how that can impact perceptions. So I'm thinking this may be the case partially for this as well. And I think the Division's done a fantastic job at our restorative justice and teaching children how to moderate their behavior better. But I think one of the things we haven't spent enough time talking about this year is the fact that you have students, for example, who are in sixth grade now, who were technically third graders. So, I mean, I could only imagine, it would be so hard for me as a, as a teacher to think, here comes my incoming sixth grade class, but I'm really looking at a third grader, right? Because I've been teaching sixth grade for a long period of time, my mind would think, this is a sixth grader. But the student walking in may be like, hey, I'm like really a third grader in disguise. Because that was the last time they were in a building. So I'm wondering if we could look at some information in that respect, if there is any, I don't know, and have some conversations around that as well. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we can definitely take some different cuts of the data and share that, and do a longer range of comparison over, I would say, not just three years, maybe five years, because of what has happened and transpired in the last few years. But also, there's caution in making those kinds of comparisons, understanding that, you know, the data that we're seeing this year and even over the last year, we can't make real comparisons for that data to data, you know, from prior, pre-pandemic, so. But we certainly can do some other cuts of the data to share.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm just looking for like, high-level trends, kind of a thing.
Ms. Jessie.
Hi. First of all, could you tell me what the HL, HLH, what is that?
That's the newly adopted literacy curriculum.
And it has its own benchmark kind of assessment?
Assessment, yes.
Okay. So it's sort of like a DRA level, which is what we normally use? So you get levels at every grade level, all the way through high school, middle?
Not all, not high school. I'm gonna let Rita talk, she definitely will be a little bit more eloquent than me in describing the assessment.
So good evening, school board members. Mrs. Jessie, that assessment does look at all aspects of our reading curriculum and instructions. So it looks at all of the areas of reading to include vocabulary, students processing of the, that language that we're teaching them within their reading curriculum. And so you get a global grade level score based on all of those reading domains that are included in the assessment for each of the students at their grade level.
So is it an ongoing assessment? Rita, you're familiar with DRA, while you go through all these different levels? Is it similar, or is it a quarterly, is it a?
No, it's, it's really like a benchmark assessment for us. So it looks at where they are at the beginning, in the middle, and the end, but it is not like a DRA, where we would be focusing on that oral reading score as well as comprehension. So it looks at comprehension as a part of it, but it looks very different than what a DRA would be given, that you might even be giving a running record on a weekly or a monthly basis as you're progress monitoring students. So this allows for a longer period of time for instruction to happen, and then looking at the progress at the beginning of the year, how, where they started, and then looking at the progress at the middle, and then we will also see that at the end relative to the curriculum taught through that curriculum-based material or our textbook that was adopted this year.
I guess, are teachers still doing DRAs or running records?
Yes, we do have a running record still going on in the school division as a part of that ongoing progress monitoring.
Okay, okay, that's, that's really critical to me. Okay, back to Ms., Dr. Casada. When I look at slides five, slide five, I think it's slide five, eight, and 15, I, I see a pattern of the groups. And you've mentioned this before, the Hispanic groups, the special ed groups, and very, those subgroups that are not doing well. Does that, does that new reading material, the H, HLM or HLH, does it have a component to support, and I guess Rita will probably have to come back, English language learners? I'm just looking at the scores, and I'm very concerned about, I know there's been some growth, but the, the, the number of kids below grade level is concerning to me. And so I'm more, I'm concerned about the, when you did the materials search and looking at it, does it have a, what are we, what are we going to do about the ELL kids and Hispanic kids and special ed kids? I know they're making progress, but the progress is, I'm still concerned about the numbers that I'm looking at.
Absolutely. And so, yes, that, our Houghton Mifflin Harcourt series, otherwise known as HMH, does include leveled texts and materials for students who would be English learners or students with disabilities. And so absolutely, we have materials and guidance to teachers around meeting the needs of those students, and we're continuing to do what you know as guided reading or small group instruction for those students. Interesting that you would ask about our English learners and the importance of us focusing on these students, as everyone knows that they are our student group that we are closely watching, because their, their scores are trailing behind those of their peers. Today, I participated in some of the professional development that we're doing to strengthen our, our language, our language-rich environments for our students. And so we had Dr. Carol Salva here today at one of our schools, providing that professional development, really working with teachers, Mrs. Jessie, on those strategies that we need to be using in all of our classrooms, kindergarten through grade 12, really, to ensure that our students, most importantly, have opportunities to practice language, right? To use the language, the academic language especially, that we're teaching, not only in language arts, but in every subject area. And so as a part of our unfinished learning plan, but also what you see as our plan relative to the strategic plan, we are providing supporting professional development on top of the ongoing professional development we've been doing around the consistent and equitable implementation of our HMH reading series, and that ensuring that equitable access to all students to that high-quality curriculum that we, we adopted this, this year.
Are there any types of common assessments being used along the way that correlates with the HLH? I'm hoping upstairs.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
So in, in addition to those growth assessments, HMH also has unit assessments that we are implementing as well. And we're continuing to build that repertoire of common assessments, as we noted in the unfinished learning plan, across all of our subject areas. And as you know, all of our subject areas have a language base to them, so ensuring that those, that we're focusing on that language enrichment and direct instruction, systematic instruction for students is important.
Okay, the other question is, is there an emphasis on writing across the curriculum and writing and reading?
Oh, absolutely.
You seem really happy about this.
Absolutely, I am happy about it, because writing is a key aspect of that language development for all of our students. And so reading and writing go hand in hand. And again, like I was giving that example of that training we were having this morning, giving our students multiple opportunities daily across all of our subject areas to utilize language, is not just oral language, but especially written language, to explain their critical thinking. And speaking of mathematics, that's one of the places that we are focused on, that's our desired state, is to ensure that all of our students are having those rich language opportunities every day in mathematics, not only to apply what they're learning in, with, relative to problem solving, but also to explain their thinking even in writing, which is an important part of that development.
So when I look at HMH, DRA, benchmark assessments, are, is there ti, is, is there time for teachers to respond to this data? Or are, it seems like a lot of testing, you know? And I'm just concerned about whether or not there's ample time, or you still use the block scheduling where they have time for meeting, for planning, and, and someone directing that, that whole conference piece?
Let me jump in here, Rita. We do have right now, one of the benefits for me in having a principal supervisory council, our principals, particularly our elementary school principals, have, you know, expressed some concern about testing. And so we do, we did form a working group of principals to examine, you know, what's happening with testing across our schools, to make sure that, that the assessments that are being used are the assessments that are needed to inform instruction, and that, you know, we don't have excessive assessments, but we have the right assessments that are taking place. So that's something that we are exploring right now. The other thing I would say that it's important to make sure where we've seen, you know, probably a dearth of assessment availability at the middle and high school level, you know, we have put some things in place, like the STAR assessment at the secondary level, so, so that is in place. So I would say that we haven't perfected the landscape of how, you know, assessments are distributed throughout, throughout the school division, but we are taking a hard look at, you know, where we are in terms of formative and summative assessments, how we're using common, common assessments, and recognizing that we also have the benchmark assessments and state requirements, so that, you know, we can get better at streamlining, but making sure we still have access to much-needed assessment data to inform next levels of instruction.
Yeah, because the growth assessment was, is the growth, am I right? The growth assessment was new this year?
Yes, with the state, yes, it was.
Yeah, so there's, there's additional testing, so I'm a little bit concerned about that. Finally, I think I want to talk about what's happening with the discipline situation, the high school African-American kids and those groups that are not doing well in, in getting a, just receiving more discipline referral, which I think Ms. Williams, has anyone looked at a correlation between the students getting discipline referrals and their, their grade of performance and/or reading performance? Has any work been done along that line?
Work's been done on that in the past. For this presentation, that didn't occur, but that's definitely something that's in the works to make those connections, because it all, it all, like you and Ms. Williams both said, Mrs. Jessie, it all connects together. So the student engagement in terms of attendance engagement, as well as student performance connected to discipline, yes, those will be coming also.
I also look at the correlation between grades and actual performance on some of these tests, because some of these kids have great grades, but my question is, at the end of the day, and it is, everything does not rely on the SOLs, but if you have all these great grades, and then at the end they don't pass the SOLs, then it's all for naught. So thank you for a very thorough report. Thank you, Dr. McDavid, I appreciate it.
Mr. Wilk.
Thank you. I'll be succinct with this. Couple things, I know we're not supposed to go too deep into virtual and make comparisons, I get that. One thing I think I asked for with the second quarter, that I would, you know, obviously not on the spot right now, but is a breakdown on the various types of virtual that we offer, whether it be outsourcing to Virginia Virtual, a full course, a full classroom offered by our own teachers, anything like that, a breakdown of the various types of virtual that we offer. And I'd like to kind of know more about the failing rates in those particular offerings of virtual, just to kind of get a better idea of what might be the best virtual practices for the future, if we are going to continue to offer a virtual component for those families.
That's, I think that's a good call out, and something that we definitely should take a look at, especially as we make determinations about how we move forward with virtual, and ensuring that students who are in virtual are the students who can thrive in that environment, and that, you know, those students who may not be thriving in virtual, making sure that we're providing them the best educational experience, which we know that in-person learning, you know, there's, there's no substitute or replacement for that. And some students, while they thrive in virtual, there may be others who do not. And so for that reason, we are taking a hard look at what is happening in the, in the virtual space, as well as informing decisions that we are making that should be coming soon about the upcoming school year. So I do think it is important to take a look at the different program, programmatic offerings that we have in that area. And so we can come back with more information on what we find there.
Okay, thank you. My other question is going with the exclusionary discipline, and another request to dive deeper into, I know there's a thing that says we'll look at school-based stuff, but a couple things to ask, and maybe this is more a Ms. Heebner question. Between 1920 and then 21 and 22, was that during the implementation of the VDOE changes when it came to restorative practices and more documentation required for exclusionary discipline? Could there be a correlation there?
So we'll, we'll have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Heebner, you can come forward if you want to share, but I do want to, you know, put caution that Ms. Heebner is not prepared with data in front of her to do any sort of analysis. I think that the most that she can do is share what the current state is, in, in terms of how we are executing our code of conduct, and how, you know, the discipline practices that we have employed within the school division. I don't want to make a request of her that she's not prepared to do tonight, but anything that is brought forward this evening, we can follow up with information once we go back and collect data and analyze that and prepare for you, so that we can have an accurate account of the current state within the school division. If there's anything, Ms. Heebner, that you'd like to share on current practices within the school vision, any information that you have in comparison, comparing what has been in place from the changes with VDOE and today, that might be helpful.
Sure, and just to answer your question, Mr. Wilk, regarding when did the changes take place? The model guidance originally, that we modified our coded behavior to match, came out in 2019. That model guidance has been revised in, in 2021, and so our coded behavior does That model guidance has been revised in 2021, and so, our coded behavior does reflect that as well. You know, as far as, like Dr. McDade said, we would need to really spend some time taking a look at all of that, but definitely, there have been significant changes that were implemented for the 2021 school year.
Okay, yeah, sorry. I guess I wanted to know, could there be a correlation to that?
It could, it could be, and I think it's, I think it's a great question that we need to explore, to see the difference between when the changes were made, and have there been significant, you know, decreases? Or is the data showing no, you know, correlation? I think it's something we need to take a look at. Of course, we want to see some positive change, we have seen some positive change, but to try to make the connection between, or determine a causal relationship between those changes and what we are seeing today from a data perspective, I think it's something that we would have to study further.
Okay, the other request would be diving deeper into particularly just behavioral issues that could lead to exclusionary discipline. I just wanted to know, like, I know coding changes for what principals or APs have to enter into the system, you know, then maybe it has changed, I don't know, particularly between 19 and then 21, you know, these years. I'd be curious to see kind of the numbers of, you know, things particular like fights versus now, back then, and knowing if any new codes may have been adopted that could impact the total number of things like fights or assault, whatever the codes are, I'm not familiar with that, but just some of the changes between then and now, that could give me a better understanding of what particularly could be happening right now, most especially in our secondary schools.
Absolutely, and there has been changes in some of the codes, correct, Ms. Heebner?
Yes, I, yes, I can answer that, absolutely.
Yeah, so it was just a matter of us taking a look at the data, which we're happy to do.
Okay, that's all, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Okay, who's up next? Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. So, I'm glad to see that there is this data here, a serious effort to address unfinished learning. I'm glad to see the efforts at the individual school levels. You know, we should be concerned. It's clear that kids were very affected by everything that happened over the last couple of years, and I think it's important to acknowledge that because schools were closed, and then we changed our methods of instruction and went into a virtual environment, everything else, you know, all the subsequent upheaval in the school environment, and also in people's home lives, and in children's personal lives, all of those had an effect and were endured by kids. And so, we're in this situation because of everything that happened and some of the decisions that were made, et cetera, and we're going to have to keep the focus on this for a long time. I think it just is important to say that we will see, hopefully, progress, and we see some bright progress here in this data, but we also still see data that's concerning, which means we need to stay laser-focused on student achievement. And if we are all combined on that focus, I think we will continue to see good results, but I think it's also just important to acknowledge this is really serious, and there are some problems that we need to address. So, I have just a couple of questions. Slide five, if I'm interpreting this right, this absentee data through the third quarter, you said 17 days is considered chronically absent, which would be 10%?
So, as the data that show now, we're through the end of the third quarter, so it was students with over 12 days of absences, because it was only out of 128 total days so far, so it would be over 17 at the end of the year.
Okay.
So, there's more, more days left, more kids could miss, or more kids could be there, right? We, the confounds here, you talk about, obviously, the elephant in the room is the pandemic and the peaks and valleys through the fall and the winter in terms of absences, particularly in the winter months. So, this year is, it'll be interesting to see what those patterns are between now and the end of the year, because they were higher mid-year than they would be normally.
That was going to be my question, is whether this, these, this percentage of absentee dates included the COVID quarantines that children were.
It includes the days that were, things that were marked as absences, right? So, there are different coding in terms of students accessing curriculum when they were quarantined or isolated and not, and so, a lot of that, yes, a lot of absences due to illness is clearly included. That's why I indicated the excused and unexcused are part of this, that's how the state has looked at it. It'll be interesting to see any changes that come from them in terms of how this information is used, given the uniqueness of this particular year.
Yeah, okay, that's good to know. I mean, because obviously, the impact of quarantines on student learning is significant.
Yes.
Because if you're not feeling well, or you're just at home, and nobody's monitoring or, you know, monitoring you, whatever, you're going to be missing in material. Okay, so that'll be good data for us to have in the future. Do we know why virtual students were experiencing more extremes? I know, as I looked through the data, there were more As, but there were also significantly more failing grades. And I know we have three different models of virtual, right? We have proximity-based, we have middle schools based through us, and then our advanced students were Prince, Virtual Prince William, Virtual Virginia. Do we, do we have insight into?
What I can tell you is where you saw the biggest discrepancies in terms of the extreme variances, we're at the elementary school level with the grade spreads differently than the distributions at secondary school. So, that correlates with the elementary school model, but I can't speak beyond that to any more in-depth analyses, but given what Mr. Wilk was asking for, deeper look into it by elementary, secondary, and the different programs should help illuminate that a little bit, but I can't hypothesize beyond that.
And even with that data, it would be too complicated for us to really know for sure, because again, we're talking about a population of students who we don't have direct access with to determine every step of the way, what the problems it may be. And then, I think it's important to note that there are situations where there are some students who are virtual that need to be in person, and virtual may not be working well for them. And so, that's a decision that has to be made to return to in-person learning. Some students thrive in the virtual space, and others may not be doing well in that space, and may need to return to in-person learning.
Yes, I appreciate that, that's really important as we move forward. And I suppose, and you said, Dr. McDade, that we'll know at a future point what we're going to be doing with virtual, or will the board weigh in on that, or is that going to be an administrative recommendation?
Yes, we'll be, we'll be sharing, you know, we'll be sharing our plans very soon on virtual with the public and with the board. We do intend to offer some level of virtual, but would like to, but we're still exploring right now what the best option for that is. We've gotten some weigh-in from some of our principals, we're looking at data again, because we want to make sure that students who take advantage of virtual are the students who can thrive in that environment. And so, that's really the biggest decision-maker. So, we will be coming forth, bringing to the board some information prior to Friday on virtual learning for next year.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Ms. Jackson.
Thank you for the presentation tonight. I just have a few clarifying questions. I just want to note that the data presented during the boardroom is just a snapshot, in my opinion. It does not tell the child's story, or the betrayal, or the level or type of instruction provided. It's just quantitative data, numbers, which is important. The data shows the good and the bad, and is help to use to make research-based decisions, but I would also argue that these decisions should be partnered with qualitative data, which kind of touched on at the depot dive that was discussed here. That being said, I have, you know, some clarifying questions. When I was looking at the virtual students and the in-person students and looking at their grades, do they take the same assessments? And I'm not talking about VGA and SOLs, like, I was just trying to analyze, like, if they took the same assessments, unit assessments or HMH?
So, in many of the cases, they are taking similar assessments, but in some cases, they may not be, right? The teacher may be administering the assessment differently, or be asking virtual students to demonstrate their knowledge in another way that may be better suited to the student's learning platform at that time, or their needs. So, it's hard to say, like, on a large scale, right, that every single student took the exact same assessment, but, you know, we would have some students in both environments taking the same, and we would also have some that may be taking a different assessment.
So, would they be taking HMH?
Yes, many of our students were able to do that in both environments.
All right, thank you. Will the parents receive, or be told the results of HMH? I'm sorry, I have a question.
So, like all assessment results, we would be expecting our teachers to be communicating those assessment results with parents through our normal communication channels. So, they should be receiving those, that information. If parents have not received that type of information, then they certainly should contact their school, contact their teacher to get that information.
And, Ms. Jesse, you talked about the number of assessments, and I appreciate when you spoke, Dr. McDade, about how the principals are meeting and discussing the assessments and like the weather, and the data, because the more tests there are, you need time to analyze the data, so I appreciate that that's a larger discussion. I just have one more clarifying question on grades. When you go to the grades and it says other, is that incomplete?
It can be anything from incomplete, not graded, audit, withdraw, they're very, they're small numbers, and most of those, again, when I say that the grades can be amended after, most of them are those changing to a final grade. So, especially when you pull something quickly after the quarter ends, there's sometimes placeholders that might be incomplete, might be multiple different things that are there. Could be pass, where there's not a grade assigned, but again, they're small proportions, and those proportions go down the further away you get from the end of the quarter as things get cleaned up and filled in.
All right, thank you, I thought so, but I wasn't sure. So, I appreciate the next step slides on the further analysis that's going to be going into the percentage of failing grades for the different demographics. And could you please refresh my memory on one more thing, and what qualifies as exclusionary discipline, and does that include ISS? I know you've answered this before.
It does, it includes in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and expulsion. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, I have a couple of questions. On the absentee numbers, you said they're excused and unexcused, and you said we were higher this year at this time than last year. So, we're at 18%, last year, we were at 13%, is that right?
In 1920, so last year, the numbers were very different because of the fully virtual, so this was one of the comparisons that in 1920, the overall percentage, Dr. Latif, was 13%. For high school in 1920, it was 20%, and in middle school, it was 11%. So, it's up overall at this point in time, but we have yet to know what will happen with the end of the year, because there was this higher spike mid-year this year than in previous years.
So, just remind me, if you were quarantined, but you signed in and did synchronous classes, that.
You're counted as present.
You're counted as present.
Present, yes, sir.
But if you were quarantined and didn't sign in, you're counted as absent?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, and then, you know, I want to comment, I think the teachers have done a tremendous work, especially our language arts department. Those HMH numbers have improved dramatically at the lower levels, at the elementary school, and then more modestly in the middle school, but certainly improvement across the board. And that's really terrific. That, you know, the reading and the mathematics were hit the hardest during the pandemic, science as well, but that has, that is some significant progress, and so, I commend our teachers, our staff, our principals, Dr. McDade. That has been, you know, one of the shining aspects of today's report. And then, on, let's go to number, this is probably a bad question, but the, what did I say? Let me skip that one. Let's go to the drop courses slide. Just clarify for me, because I've, I have four kids in the system, that's almost 48 years of schooling. Tell me what transfer move to same or higher weight course means.
So, say a student changed from a particular AP government class to another AP class within the social studies arena, that's a course in the same subject area that's the same weight, right? As opposed to in mathematics, if a student dropped from AP Calculus to Probability and Statistics, that was an unweighted course. Those are just examples, illustrative examples, but that's the difference. So, a student moved from a weighted course to another weighted course, and we looked at it, and this was a new analysis, so we looked at it within the same subject area. So, there's noise here in this that could be further explored, but it's tricky when you're getting into the student schedules, but that's, that's what that means.
So, it's like if you went from AP Stats to AP Calc?
Yep.
That's the same?
Correct.
Right, that would be considered the same?
Correct.
Or if you went from regular stats and said, this is too easy, I'm going to move to AP Stats, because I want to get that weight, I'm doing really well, that would be moving to a higher.
Higher-weighted course, yes, sir.
So, that would be under that 678.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Is it, in this, I guarantee open Pandora's box, but I have to ask a question, but, you know what, I won't ask a question, I'll reserve that question for off the record. Let's go next to, okay, so your next steps on math, I have to tell you, I am very excited, you know, that you're going to start promoting the math competitions again, MathQuest 24 and Virtual MathQuest. And, you know, I'm a big proponent of our students' success in the way they shine, whether it's, you know, robotics, science fair, or athletes, you know, we are focusing on that with our last few board meetings. But, you know, these kinds of competitions, opportunities, you know, really do create desire, inspiration, and I've seen the 24 games done at the elementary level, and those are just fantastic to watch. I know they require a lot of staffing, I know they require a lot of volunteer parents and families, but I can't encourage you all, you know, on these things, and to even go further, to find things like, you know, QuizBowl, programs that we're not currently doing, you know, expanding our debate and speech and forensic, you know, we do debate, but we don't do other types of the speech competitions, like you'll see in the northern counties or northern states. And all of those things, I do think, lead to inclusion of more students, more opportunities, reducing the opportunity gaps, and certainly inspires students to take a higher level and a newer interest in their course subjects, which really do prepare them. So, I do commend you all for this, this is, this is great. And not to let the cat out of the bag, but I know we're going to have a presentation on our, you know, upgraded or reimagined summer school coming up. And what I wanted, some of the answers to some of the students, especially on the English learning languages, I know last year, we really tried to, you know, redouble our summer school efforts, but this, you know, and, you know, just not to let the cat out of the bag, but, you know, our next meeting, our next couple of meetings, we'll be talking about what the reimagined summer school program will look like, Dr. McDade, if you want to address a couple, you know, the highlights of what you're going to be bringing to us, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
It's fine, I'm going to put Rita on the spot.
Okay. Because I know there was a heavy emphasis on English language learners in the summer.
It's a lot of.
Yeah, there's a lot in there.
We're excited about a lot of new programming and curriculum that is going to be offered coming this year for summer school, and not just for students, but also opportunities and resources for parents, which is critically important. So, Rita, you want to highlight a couple of the things that are coming out of your shop?
Absolutely. So, this year, for reimagining our summer school instructional program, we will have a launch program, which will be an in-person program for our students who have the greatest needs with unfinished learning. But we will also be offering a discovery program that will be available to all students, those attending in person, but also virtual, there are virtual opportunities for enrichment in all of the subject areas, expansion of our CTE enrichment programs, as well as fine and performing arts. So, we are looking at increases and expansion of all of those opportunities across all of the core subject areas. And we're very excited about the learning opportunities that we're going to have for families, ways to really engage our families in learning about how they can best support their students at home, whether they be virtual or in person, in all of the subject areas. We are going to have book talks and other experts coming to work with our families, and it's not just really confined to summer. We're reimagining summer by looking at it as our third semester of learning, really year-round learning for our entire Prince William County community. And that includes our partnerships with Parks and Rec and some of our other community organizations and business partners. Just speaking about mathematics, so it's hard to make me stop after I start about some of this exciting. stuff.
No, we're very good.
We're going to be focusing our math support this summer on those areas, those targeted areas that most have the biggest issues with them. For example, numbers and number sense for our kindergarten through second graders, multiplication, division, problem solving, really trying to build confidence in all of our learners around mathematics. There's a lot of sometimes fear that goes along with mathematics, and so we're trying to change that as we work to support our families and supporting our students in STEM, in science and mathematics. We're going to be really looking at those competitions that you were talking about. And we are going to be focusing on problem solving and math communication. We're very excited about a partnership that we have with George Mason, Lockheed Martin and Ovont, in which they're going to be offering some rich STEM tasks for our students to participate on. And those companies will be bringing forward some real-world problems for our students to help solve. So that gives you a little bit of taste around the reimagining of summer school for this year.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. I really appreciate it. And thank you, Dr. McDade. I mean, I think that, as Jen Wall mentioned earlier, you know, the pandemic happened, choices we made impacted students. And those are the impacts we're dealing with now. And there's no template or pre-planned program or textbook on how to dig ourselves out of this. And this has been Dr. McDade's, you know, laser focus since she arrived, the unfinished learning plan, the launching thriving futures, the commitment to, you know, looking at the data regularly, addressing it, analyzing it, and coming up with solutions for it. And so I can't, I thank the teachers, the school division, the principals, everyone for the hard work. This is truly hard work. And it's not going to be, as Dr. McDade reminds us, corrected in a year, or two years, or three years. I mean, this is a long-term effort that we have to make. And so I think we have a plan, and we're starting to see some of the fruits of that with some of the testing. So I truly appreciate all your work, your commitment to looking at this data and being honest. It is critical. And Dr. McDade, thank you very much for this report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I appreciate the comments from every board member. I also appreciate your understanding that we are in this for the long term. And there is a wealth of research that's available now, based on studies about the pandemic and what's happening across this country and classrooms in all school divisions. And so it really is critically important that we stay the course and carry out our plan with fidelity and not add on more and more and more, because we have to make sure that we really know and understand what is working and not working. And so it's not to our advantage to be reactionary to the data that we see and then think that we have to start piling on more programs and initiatives. Because it's not programs and initiatives that bring about academic progress, it is the quality of the instructional core, what is happening in our classrooms. And as we continue to support the tremendous work that our teachers and our leaders have been doing in our schools across the school division, making sure that we are remaining focused on what happens in the classroom, that is how we continue to ensure academic achievement. So we, we will be staying true to our plans, both our unfinished learning plan, as well as our strategic plan. And I am also excited to announce that we are launching continuous improvement within the school division, ensuring that school-based improvement plans are geared towards addressing this data, doing the root cause analysis, identifying the problems of practice that exist, so that we're really strategic in our approach in how we support students. So more to come about that as we go through continuous improvement season. But I do appreciate all of the support of the board and want to acknowledge all of the hard work of my team also, because we understand what is at stake right now, and that is our priority, student achievement.
Fantastic. So I mean, I would just wrap up real quick on, I have to make a comment on the students that came earlier. Strong libraries make strong students. I know they're not here, but I truly believe that. And I think, you know, without investing a whole lot of money, if you just go into the library and read some of those books on the shelves, we'd all be better off. And so I encourage our students to take the advice of those students who came earlier, you know. And I think, just one last comment, I think it was Rita Goss who mentioned that, you know, the reading and writing is so critical to our math and science success. So, you know, what I faced with my children at home after the pandemic is a struggle with understanding what the question was asking, right? Whether it was a science question or a math question. That comes from the English. It comes from the language. It comes from the the practice. And I can't emphasize enough for parents and families, teachers, that, you know, the improvements will come in math and science, especially, we'll continue to work on that, but the language learning is so critical to that. And I know Rita Goss mentioned that a little bit, that that does have a dramatic impact. So the more we read, the more success you're going to find. And the more writing you have, the more success you're going to find across the board. And so it is critical. It is why you might see, you know, a heavy emphasis on our language arts, as we have always done. And it does show some great success. So to wrap up, Ms. Ralston, did you have anything to add? I didn't want to miss you. Are you good?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. All right. So we'll wrap up this presentation, Dr. McDade. And I encourage the board members, if they have any thoughts, you know, please email them to the superintendent and her staff. We'll move on to the next presentation, which will be on where we are with start times. Dr. McDade?
Yes, thank you so much. And thank you, Dr. Casada, for your presentation. So up next is a presentation on school start times. Dr. Casada will also share this information along with Mr. Al Shiroki, our chief operating officer, as well as support from Ms. Rita Goss, our associate superintendent for teaching and learning, will be available as usual to help address any questions that the board members may have regarding school start times.
All right. Hello again. Dr. Latif, Vice Chair Jackson, school board members, and Dr. McDade. I'm now going to share an update on what PWCS has done to date to explore school start time possibilities. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide some history and background research, share the common start time models in the literature, including the impacts of those models. And then the presentation ends with next steps for what Prince William County is going to do in this exploration phase. So the inquiry into school start time changes began in January 2020 with a preliminary literature search. Prince William County worked with Hanover Research to conduct a benchmarking study, and that was completed in June of 2020. The report was then provided to division leadership. Of course, the pandemic interrupted some of this research on school start times. And so a new timeline was developed in December of 2020. And in February of 2021, members of the student senate and the student school board reps at the time met to discuss students' perspectives on the topic. So the research accountability and strategic planning department met with the Department of Support Services to determine next steps in the process, resulting in a more in-depth review of the literature and recommendation for next steps. If you recall, in June of 2021, the superintendent then shared information regarding school start times with the school board as part of the return to learn update. And in February 2022, student school board representatives, as you heard tonight, identified school start times as a key issue. Staff in my department met with them to discuss potential surveys, and I'll talk more about the surveys later in the presentation. The next two slides summarize research findings in this area. So most of the research has been focused on adolescents and the science around sleep. So the strongest findings have been in the area of health and well-being, which is not surprising, given that this is the area mentioned most by scientists and physicians as the reason for delaying start times for adolescents. So we had one study about migraines, which is a newer one, conducted after the height of the pandemic, where school start times were changed due to virtual learning, did show that students gained an average of about 22 minutes of sleep, which was enough to shift circadian rhythms. The gain in terms of sleep is really more about shifting sleep cycles for students to match their body's natural patterns, right, that occur in adolescents. So some research has looked at the impact on attendance in academics, but this research result here is a little bit more mixed. And by that, I mean it makes it harder to state definitive relationships. So part of the reason for this is the great variation in start time models, right? There's all sorts of different ways that this is implemented. Another reason is some of the threats to validity, sorry for the nerdiness, due to designs of the studies, right? So as a result, it's hard for researchers to make definitive claims about the link between start times and academic performance, since there are so many variables at play impacting student performance. Here's an example. There was a study of high school's teachers in Switzerland, and the teachers actually preferred more standard start times, which might make teachers more effective earlier in the day, which could be negating some academic impacts on the students who preferred the later start times, right? So there's lots of confounding things. And in terms of attendance, research has really shown that factors beyond start times are having a higher weight of influence on student attendance than the start times themselves. One thing that's really critical from what the research shows is that it's important to recognize there are going to be both positive and negative consequences of any changes to start times. We'll discuss those specific issues in a moment. But as such, the research strongly says that it's critical to take steps to involve the community from the outset to ensure that any changes that do not create unintended negative consequences or inequities. So we're going to talk about some major alternative start time models based on the recommendations in the literature. There are many other variations that involve slight shifts to start times at one or more levels, but our focus is on these main models that are recommended in the sleep science literature. I'm going to nickname them for you as we go through. So the first one is basically what we're going to call flip, right? So it basically, in our world, would be flipping high school and elementary school. Currently, we have high school first, then middle school, then elementary, right? So one way to move high school and adolescents later would be to flip them, right? So put elementary students first, but keeping middle schools at the same time. So that's model one. Model two, we'll call shift, right? That just keeps the same order, but shifts everything later. So high school doesn't start until 8:30, middle and elementary after that. You'll see some examples of what those schedules would look like in just a moment. And then number three is a combination. So it's flip and shift, right? So it flips the order, right? So instead of high school, middle, elementary, it would be elementary, middle, high, but also start no earlier than 8:30. And then finally, there's a model out there that you're going to hear about very briefly, and then not again, because it's not feasible for us. It's flip and compact, right? So start high school and middle school simultaneously, and no earlier than 8:30 with elementary school starting after. And then, as I mentioned on the last slide, the research is very clear that any, any change requires advanced planning, transparency, and extensive stakeholder involvement. All right. So now we've got a color-coded chart for you. This slide summarizes the models described on the previous slide, without the cute nicknames, plus some of the impacts of each on the division, the community, employees, and students, as well as other important considerations. It's also important to note that there may be considerations and impacts that we don't even know yet, such as what the impact of a shifted schedule would be on the ability to hire bus drivers, for example. So there's color coding of impacts for easy reference, right? Like a stoplight, green for less of an impact, yellow for moderate, and red for substantial. So what do we mean by costs, right? The costs most typically involved with any changes to start times are in the area of transportation, in terms of increased numbers of bus drivers or increased numbers even of buses. You'll see in most of the models that we'd be considering, the cost is minimal because we'd still be spacing out our students and not having them all come at the same time. One thing I do want to call out before I describe the impacts for each one, is that Prince William County has some unique issues, right? We have a very large geographic area to cover with a lot of different buses. And we also have specialty programs that have express transportation. So all of these are additional complicating factors to the logistics that Mr. Shiroki and his team have to navigate when they address transportation. All right. So let's take a look at each of the models with our color coding. So remember, number one is the flip, right? So you'd put elementary first, then middle, then high school. There's minimal cost, because you'd be taking the same number of buses, same number of drivers, just flipping the order. However, there's, when you look at the substantial impact on the community, employees, and even students, there's impact on things like daycare centers, sports leagues, employers for families, as well as for students, and work schedules. And then there's other additional considerations, including logistics of extracurricular activities because of the shifting in the time. And this model, where you just flip it, may not fully address students at middle school who are also adolescents. Okay? Number two, remember, we called that shift. Again, minimal cost, because again, same spacing, keeping, you'd have elementary, I'm sorry, high school, middle, elementary, but they all just start later. Similar substantial impacts because of the shift that would impact parental work schedules, daycare centers, availability of students, older students to take care of younger students before or after school. And in this case, in addition, those extracurricular activity logistics and the late finish for elementary school may impact staff who have elementary students, for example. All right. And then finally, number three, the flip and shift. Again, the minimal cost, because busing would still be spaced out. Same kind of community impacts because of things being just different than they are now, hence the need to engage the community. And then logistics of extracurriculars would still be there. And in this case, the late finish for high school would impact staff and students in terms of after-school work and things like that. I did mention that you weren't going to hear about the last one. Again, I said that a little bit prematurely. That fourth model, you can see as a substantial cost, because if we compacted it, high and middle school at the same time, that would require us to have about 486 additional bus drivers and 88 additional aides. And that's not to mention potentially additional buses. And as we know, there are challenges to get bus drivers for the bus routes we currently have. So this is clearly not, not feasible. All right. So transportation, put together what some example bell schedules could look like in each model. Keep in mind that they are examples, and that not all schools at a given level would have the same bell schedule. The range in elementary school in terms of start times is currently over an hour, and that would not likely change. On the right, you'll see in the additional notes, some examples of current schedules, right? Whether high school's starting around 7:30, middle school 8:15 to 8:20, and elementary school 9 o'clock. So that's just context for you. So again, model one includes bell schedules that match our current bell schedules, but we call it the flip model, right? So elementary and high school times would flip. You see two examples for elementary school, due to, again, our large geographic area and traffic. We have to have elementary schools on staggered schedules. They cannot all start at the same time. Model two shows you some examples of what it could look like with the shift approach, nothing starting before 8:30. You notice in this one, the school ranges from starting at 8:30 for high school to up to at 10 o'clock or later for elementary school, going up until, in some cases, 5 o'clock. And then model three shows what it would look like with that flip and shift approach, elementary first, but nothing starting before 8:30. And in that case, you'd have, again, the same range as in model two, but it would be high schools going until 5 o'clock or potentially later. And again, remember, model four is not viable for Prince William County, so bell schedules are not included. All right. Knowing all of that, what are we going to do? And we said, remember, the research is really clear, that stakeholder engagement is essential. And so the next step is to conduct interest and feasibility surveys. I really want to take a moment to thank our student school board representatives for their leadership and partnership in the development of these surveys. It's been truly a joy for them. The surveys for students, staff, and parents will be administered starting next week, and will be open for two weeks. The surveys include questions about preferences for the models discussed during this presentation, as well as preference for current or standard start times. Those example bell schedules that you just saw, those will be part of the surveys for people to respond to in terms of options. Once the surveys are completed, the results from those surveys will be shared, will be communicated. And then those results will be used to determine what level of support there is for the consideration of potential changes to school start times for school year 23, 24, and beyond. Obviously, this is something that takes some time. Further engagement, so again, these surveys are only step one. If the results indicate sufficient entrance to propose changes to start times, the next step would be to engage in a comprehensive awareness campaign that shares the research, survey results, and any draft timeline. And then stakeholder engagement would occur after that in various ways for people to provide feedback and opinions on any proposed changes. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present this update on what we've done so far and next steps related to exploring school start times.
Thank you for that. I want to point out that we do have some neighbors that have done some of this already. Loudoun County has had a, I believe it's elementary starts, middle comes second, and then high school ends the day. I think they've been doing it for like 20 years now. So that might be a good, like a local, you just find out what's going on there. And then in Fairfax County, they flipped the middle and high school, I believe. So middle school comes in early, high school comes in next, and then elementary is at the time it's always been. I have been told that it made, it did make a difference doing it that way in Fairfax. But that's anecdotal, so don't have any qualitative, quantitative evidence for you. But I thought it was worth mentioning.
Williams, and then Ms. Jessie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is the second or third time in eight years that we've sort of talked about this, but never at this level in depth. So I really appreciate that. And all of the hard work, as well as the students who, I think, really generated us taking... work, as well as the students who, I think, really generated us taking an in-dive, in-depth, excuse me, look at this. I'm not sure, I'd be very interested to see the community feedback, and I hope that we continue to use our current marketing strategies by texting parents and all of the other methods of communication so we can get as wide of a net as possible. Because I know what the students are in favor of, but I'm also interested to see how this impacts our families. And thank you for all of your hard work on this issue. I do think it's worth noting that while we do have surrounding counties that have different start times and their level of success, that we continue to be unique because of our programming. And I think that's an important factor, too, when we survey our parents so that they're knowledgeable about how they may impact their students' transitions between one building and another or one program and another. Especially, I could think of things like Governor School and how that would really interrupt a student's schedule. So, I appreciate all of the time and effort. Thank you.
Ms. Jesse.
You know, when I was an elementary principal, I had this kid who was not showing up for school. And I brought him into the office and gave him the old one-two. Like, why are you being, why haven't you been coming to school on time? And so, then I was adamant, and I said, well, what time do you get up? And he said, which time? I said, what do you mean, which time? He said, the time I get dressed in the bed so my brother can wake me up so my mother can go to work, or the time when my brother's supposed to wake me up when the bus comes. And it was a lesson for me because he said to me, you need to talk to my brother, he's not doing his job. He's not waking me up on time. I think the impact on parents who are on that bellway, I dealt with the bellway parents. They were up at 5 o'clock in the morning, probably like this kid, dressing the kid in the bed at 5 o'clock, and then the older child, by 4th grade, most of my parents would transfer out because then, I think it's like 10 or 11, that a child can stay home for an hour with the. So, I think the community impact is going to be great, and those parents that are in those lower-income areas where it's going to impact babysitting and all, you've got to get the information. I'm curious about when the survey is going to go out because one of the things I said at the last board meeting was that teachers came to me once and said, Mrs. Jesse, don't have another good idea. And I'm just wondering about the impact of another survey, another plan for another program. I'm just curious if, it looks like so much, and kids being at bus stops late at night, kids leaving elementary at 4, 5 o'clock when it's dark, kids being at bus stops, but they wouldn't be at bus stops early in the morning. I think that's the good thing about it. But I'm just curious, but I think that whatever we do, we need to make sure that survey gets to the staffs in those schools and to those parents who don't normally respond to a survey. The ones that are going to be impacted are going to be the ones who can't afford daycare or they can't afford to stay home. There was one where you had elementary kids going to school at 10 o'clock, was that right?
One of the, one of the models, if you shift everything, flip everything and shift it, yeah.
So, you would have to wait, stay home to get your child out of bed, so you wouldn't be able to work. There are all kinds of variables in this, but it's an extensive amount of work, and I appreciate the work. But I just think the impact at this point on staff and parents, I think we need to be careful about this one. I just, I'm not sure if this is one of those things where a good idea, don't have another one. So, that's my comments.
Ms. Wall.
I appreciate you and everybody who worked on this. I know it's a lot of work. I have just some general, a couple of general questions and then just some comments. So, my first question is, what, so I noticed here on Model 1 FLIP that the compression is, it's actually quite spread out. It's more spread out than what we currently have. So, what we currently have is about a seven, you know, high school starting like 7:25, 7:30, and then elementary school starting 9, 9, 10, I think. We might have some schools that start as late as 9, 10. But anyway, you know, 7:30 to 9, that's about an hour and a half. It's more compressed than Number 1. Could you explain why this is so spread out? Like, middle school 8:45? And I understand that we have elementary schools that start at different times. So, I mean, not every middle school, I'm assuming, would have started 8:45 because if you have a, if you were to have an elementary school start at 7:30, then perhaps, I'm assuming, you would have a feeder middle school starting at like 8:15 or something like that.
So, Al, just to jump on that and maybe you can answer both. All the models here have a two-hour spread, whereas our current model's an hour and a half. How did you guys come up with that?
The models that we presented, obviously, they are in draft form, and the timing between the runs are historically, right now, are 30 minutes between school levels. We have added for the second and the third, you will see, I believe it's 15 minutes as an additional buffer, knowing that we're still at 10,000 feet with these models. This is not an exact science, but as we conduct the survey, we get interest. We will then drill down a lot further, but in order to provide something to the parents, we don't want to overpromise and underdeliver and say that school would end instead of at 5 o'clock, 4:30, and then find that when we do the routing and do the geography, that we find that we have to add additional time. We would rather provide a conservative time and then narrow that in if there is an interest that comes from the community.
Can I follow up on that? Yeah. Okay. So, I understand that analysis, however, it does somewhat poison the well a little bit to say, oh, well, you know, your school would start at 10:20, and then you wouldn't get out till 5:00, and you have elementary school kids, for instance. Or even, Number 1 isn't quite so bad, but if we were to say, like, start 7:30, and then we have middle school, we actually think it might be more like 8:30, and high school might be more like 9, 10. That's, 9, 10 start time is significantly better when you look at the end time, which would be, instead of 4:10, it would be 3:50. Psychologically speaking, I guess what I'm saying is, like, if we're really conservative and we build in all this buffer and then we put it out to parents, they're going to be like, no. Like, I don't want my elementary school kid coming home, you know, at 5:00. Or it would be 6:00 probably by the time they got off the bus. Or the converse, they might be like, no, that's just too late. You see what I'm saying? It's like, I think when we put the survey out, if we're not, if we hedge our bets with, you know, like, being conservative, then we're going to kill it because it won't look attractive at all. That's my concern.
Yeah. I'd be happy to walk it through with you. We've added 15 minutes for the second and the third grouping on that additional. So, we still have 30 minutes, 45, and 45 that's there. But again, when you're sharing something with the community, I think you have to be realistic. You know, the one that I think is the extreme is if you do a FLIP, but then you delay the start time. So, that is the latest that you do have, and that follows what, I believe, the state of California, what they have done, where they said all schools must start at a minimum time. But that's, again, it's following the science. But again, we have not purposely, I understand what you're saying, we are not purposely trying to taint the survey, but I think we just have to be realistic. We do have a tremendous amount, you know, when you look at the scheduling, our heaviest load is in elementary and high school. Elementary because of the pre-K programs that we support, and the high schools because of the specialty programs. And by adding that buffer, it allows us not to have, add additional staff to be able to make those coverages. It's just looking at that holistically at this stage in order for us to be able to say with confidence, we believe that we can accomplish this. It might get better, but we, again, we just don't want to overpromise and underdeliver with what we're sharing. It's fairly realistic, given the extent of the routing that we do. You know, we do over 2,200 routes every morning, and we repeat it again in the afternoon. And it's just, it's just pretty complex. And I don't, I don't want to oversimplify that, but at the same time, I don't want to, again, I don't want to overpromise and make it tighter, and then we come back and we tell parents, well, we said it was going to be 4:50, but in reality, it's going to have to be 5:05. But I get the psychological piece when you see 5:05. And we even looked at that when we had to do double runs this year. And when we were in the time of COVID, when we were looking to bring kids back, we saw that and we understand. But I think the interest is what we've got to look at first because it's the matter of, right now in the mornings, high school students are in the dark going to school. The reverse will affect if you do the FLIP. It's helping people understand what's the given, the take when you make that FLIP because there are plenty of school divisions in this country that do the FLIP, where they start elementary, middle, and high, and they've done that for many years. It's just getting our parents in the community and all the stakeholders to evaluate that and determine which one they believe works best for them.
Okay. That's, yes, I agree. That's the most important piece, is the stakeholders' evaluation. Is there a way we could adjust? I know that science says 8:30 is ideal for adolescents. However, if we were to even adjust it to 8 o'clock, considering the science, but also considering the practicalities that we've talked about, like, you know, kids getting off buses at 5 o'clock and kids standing in the bus, standing in the dark, et cetera, could we do something where we explore keeping the current order, but we start at 8:00 instead of 7:30? Or could we explore inverting the bell schedule? The invert, I guess, the FLIP, but maybe shift that just a little bit? I'm not sure. I guess what you're saying is you kind of like the spread, but you're saying you built in 15 minutes each time, so if we reduce those built-in times to be more reflective of what we currently have, then it would be like 7:30 to, like, high school starting at 9:00, right? If you took out the 15-minute buffer between each?
Correct. So, you know, I'll just use an example here. Currently, we have elementary schools, let's say they start at 8:30. We have a third today, we have a break between the first tier and the second tier where the second elementary starts 30 minutes later. But we built in, traditionally, we would have 30 minutes between the second-tier elementary and the middle school. We've added an extra 15 minutes there. And then when you go from middle school to high school, this year, we have 30 minutes in between, we just put an additional 15. We can trim it down, and we can leave it at 30. I just don't want to, again, I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver when we, if the community and everybody wants to move forward, and then we get down to running the software with the numbers of students and the programming, and we find that we need to put it back, we just don't want them to say, well, first you told me 4:55, and now you're telling me 5:10. You just added 15 minutes, this impacts my day. Again, but we could work with the superintendent and staff to decide if we want to trim that down a little.
Yeah.
But the only thing that I would consider is if you take the 15 minutes away between the, say, the middle and the high school, those two runs there, and just go back to what we have today, which is 30 minutes in between each.
I think honestly, the next step here really is to start to engage our families and get some input before we start trying to make so many different changes. It's a lot that's going into this. We are engaging with our students. We've gotten a lot of research, a lot of data, and the team has spent a lot of time trying to figure out these options. And I think, you know, the best thing would be to start engaging families, hearing from them, because to go back and try to do several different iterations without that voice may just result in us coming back to the same, to the same thing, but having spent, you know, so much time trying to make revisions only to find out that the areas that we're trying to change, we're hearing, you know, that families are either for or against. So, I do think what Al is saying is important to make sure that we start to collect some data from our families to make some of the recommended changes once we know the appetite for some kind of schedule change based on the options that we're putting forward right now.
So, on that note, Dr. McDade, the concern I have, I share with Jen Wall, that this is, if this survey goes out like this, it poison pills the thing. I mean, I think you put 5 o'clock there, I think everybody kills it, and they say, there's no way I'm sending anybody to school, and then they come home at 5 o'clock. I don't, what I don't understand is, you know, for example, you know, we currently have high school at 7:30, middle school 8:20, elementary school at 9:00. Explain to me why the FLIP can't be elementary school at 7:30, high school at 9:00? What's the, why can't you just go with what we have? And so, option 1 to the families is, you know, you've put high school to 9:30 and 4:10, which is fine, I mean, and I see that, but is there a reason why? You had to build in more time?
The only time that we've added, again, is an additional 15 minutes from what we currently have, but I don't want you to think, every elementary school does not start at the same time. We have two tiers that spread over time.
I see. So, then on that additional notes there, that's not really right. The elementary school where it says 9 to 3:40, what are the second tier for the elementary schools then that we currently do?
The second tier would be, I don't have it in front of me, but it would be 30 minutes later, it'd be 9:30 to 4:10.
So, we have some elementary schools starting at 9:30?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, that's fine. Okay. Okay. So, example 1, Model 1, would be basically just flipping the high school and middle school, and you added about 30 minutes there because of that. You know, I think if we're going to gauge the appetite of the public, I think, you know, if we're going to then go further and do engagement over the course of a year, I think there should be questions on the survey, and I don't know if there are, that do you favor just changing the order? Do you favor starting high school later? So that there's just a generic, straight-up question, because if you're going to give people these choices right off the bat, which we haven't, none of us, we're looking at this for the first time. You know, I'm not sure that's fair to throw the public possible potential bell schedules when I think the real thing we want to know is, hey, are you all interested in switching the order? You know, like, would you want high school starting later? I mean, that's really the appetite I'm looking for. I mean, if you, you know, then, once you do that, you can go to potential bell schedules. But I really question sort of this, I look at this survey as killing the thing.
I think a couple of things. One, we can bring forward a proposed survey for review even before it goes out, that's number 1. But number 2, whatever survey we send out, the public will have questions and will want to know this information to make an informed decision. And so, we just, we have to be honest with them about, you know, what the impacts are and be transparent about those impacts so that when they make the decision, it's one that they can actually live with and that will work for their families, so that we get real input and people don't feel that they've made a decision without enough information, because I think that's where problems come in, and we make changes, and people don't realize the impacts to their families until after the change is made. And I think the worst thing that we can do is make a change without people having enough information and then having to walk it back, or it's not working out. So, we, having the amount of time and runway for this, I think that we can do exactly what you're saying. Put a survey together, provide it to the board for review. We can get that out, but then also give parents all of the considerations so that they can be thinking through that when they weigh in on it. And I'm sure that, just like you have questions, parents will probably pose questions that we haven't even thought of that'll be considered, which is why the year-long runway is important. This will be a process, and I think it'll be an iterative process, and I think the more voices that we get to this, we can come to a decision that, you know, everyone can live with, and that's important. So, I think we just have to be patient with the process and take the time and do our due diligence to hear, and it'll have to be more than just a survey. We'll probably have to, you know, have some roundtable discussions, we'll have to go out and do small groups and talk to people. And I think if we do that, we can get to a place where we make a decision that's in the best interest of all students and still be supportive of our families' needs.
Jackson and then Ms.
I just want to, just piggyback on the conversation, maybe we could say that the times are estimated in the survey or something? I agree that regarding start times, it's imperative to collect community feedback, and I was just kind of wondering, and you don't need to answer this, like, what the goal of the response rate or sample size of the surveys would be, to be statistically relevant? Because in the past, sometimes we don't get a lot of people that respond, and since this is such a big change, like, what number are we aiming for? And then, just on that, would the survey be in multiple home languages? Yes? Okay. I'll pause while you.
Yes, the survey would be in multiple languages and to address the question before, it'd be out to families in multiple ways to increase response rates, and we would look to see and continue to do follow-ups, right? To, you know, get a sufficient response rate. Things that were asked about the survey in terms of seeing illustrative examples and things of the bell schedules, the draft that currently exists, does that and asks the questions to gauge the interest. Dr. McDade summed up what I would have said to answer that perfectly, so I won't repeat it.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Casada. And then for related
And then for later discussion, not tonight, I would just be curious to know how late buses for middle and high school would be impacted by this and whether or not they're still feasible. And I don't know enough about infrastructure, so I was just curious. And then when I'm looking at the draft schedule, so that doesn't need to be answered right now, the late school buses. When I'm looking at the draft schedule, where did the traditional schools fall under? Under middle or elementary, like Porter, Pennington, and the Knoxville School?
So for this, that determination has not been made, knowing that we're looking at, I would say, 98% of the population. But their schedules are obviously are very unique. We have specialized transportation, buses that pick those children up, unlike, I'll say, our mainstream schools. So, but that decision has not been made yet.
Okay, thank you.
Again, I want to reiterate that the persons most impacted and have the least amount of resources, we need to make sure we get to those people. We have people in this boardroom all the time. And often, when you look at the audience, it's people who can afford, who have the educational background, the money, our financial situation. They will find a way to hire a babysitter or do those things. I think we do surveys and somehow you've got to get to the people who are impacted most and who will probably come into this boardroom and complain the least, if I could put it that way. I don't, something like this is something that I, whenever we do this survey, I need some assurance that we're going to make an effort other than sending something to home and maybe to a family that doesn't speak English or a person who doesn't have a reader in the home. That's the first group. The second group to me, for me, is the people who have to implement the schedule changes. And that's going to be the teachers and the administrators who are already saying, "We're staying late and, you know, now you're going to have us stay later." So as long as we get impact, information from them saying they want to change. I think what Dr. McDade is saying, that they, first, we have to determine if they want to change. But if they do want to change, we need to give them something very specific to say, "This is going to be the impact." And, but more importantly, I've been here a long time and I find that the surveys go to people, are responding, you get a response back from certain groups of people. And if we're not getting the type of responses from the lower-income families and minority families, we need to make a second effort or a different effort to make sure we get that information. Because they're not going to be able to afford to change their work schedule. And they are hourly employees in many instances. And they are not Zoom people who can Zoom from home. They don't have those types of jobs. So if you would, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on that because I think that's critical. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, anything to add, Dr. McDade, or we good? Okay, thank you so much for the presentation, guys. That was great. I'm sad that our student wasn't here to weigh in at this, you know?
But they have been a part of, they've been working directly with Dr. Casada and Mr. Shiroki. So their voice is definitely captured.
They've been fantastic, absolutely fantastic to work with.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Casada. Thank you, Mr. Shiroki.
Well, that's reassuring. I really appreciate that, guys. Next, we're moving on to, what are we at? We're at Board Matters? Moving on to Board Matters. Who do we start with? Who wants to start? Which side? How about Ms. Jessie? Would you like to start tonight?
I, for recognition of Military Families Month this week. And I was at Rockledge Elementary today and I received this little bracelet and it says, "Kids served too." And it was a wonderful ceremony. Everybody, of course, wore purple. Tomorrow, they're wearing yellow. I'm not sure why, but it's a whole week of celebration. And I met with the students and read to the K-2 people, K-2 students. I haven't read to K-2 students in a while. And Rita, you know they don't stay on task. And the teachers are upset about them not staying on task, so they try to help them out. So they're saying, "Listen to her, listen to her." So I said, "I think I've got this." Well, I had someone. But anyway, it was fun reading the stories to them. And three through five, the principal, Mrs. Steptoe Coleman? Is it, is it Doctor Steptoe Coleman? We're not sure. We're going to give her a doctorate. Why don't we just give her a doctorate? But anyway, she's done a phenomenal job. And the three through five students, she brought them all into the cafeteria. These are students who have parents who are in the military or families that have been in the military. They came into that room and she met with every one of those kids and she sat with each one and asked them where they had traveled. Now, she asked me initially, as a military wife, is that, "How many places have you been?" I said, "I've been to Okinawa." Because my husband was in the Marine Corps and that's the only place we went and we were allowed to go. But kids had traveled from Italy, France, all over, and believe it or not, many to Okinawa. And the fathers have participated in several wars, the Afghanistan War, Iraq, and Vietnam. And one father had participated in 911 and the takeover of the Capitol. So it was a very interesting conversation with students. The other, I attended a paint night at John Jenkins where there was a video, you step-by-step the painting of a giraffe. At the end, at the tables, the giraffes looked very different. Some had purple dots, some were blue. Some didn't look like giraffes. One giraffe really looked like a snake. I don't know what that child did to that giraffe. But the parents were very pleased and it was a very unique experience. And Woodbridge High School had a multicultural night that included a parade of nations and a phenomenal dance routine by students presenting from all countries. So it's good getting back out into the schools and I've just had a wonderful week. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first want to start by congratulating Ms. Amy Schott again. She, I actually served on the committee for when she was being hired as a principal. And then she was my oldest son's principal at Rockledge. And if you want to go all the way back to Rockledge alumni, I think she was one of my favorite Rockledge principals of all time because I used to actually go to Rockledge too myself. So congratulations again to Ms. Schott, very well-deserved honor. And since we have her in attendance this evening, she was not at the last school board meeting, I just want to formally congratulate Ms. Rita Goss again for being recognized as one of the 21 extraordinary women leaders in Prince William County. Because you weren't here last month and we usually just call you up here to interrogate you. So it's nice to be able to celebrate you. So congratulations again. And moving on from that, Dr. McDade spoke about Volunteer Week. And one of the things that I would like to see more of is our appreciation for volunteers, but also for our volunteers to come share their stories. We have so many wonderful organizations and groups that come and volunteer in our schools and with our students and with our families. Groups like Omega U, Alpha Academy, Sigma Beta Club, the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, various community groups, civic associations, Future Kings, there are so many. And very rarely do we get to hear the stories of success and how they impact our school division. So it would be really nice, I hope, if they're listening, that they take the time out, sign up for Citizen Comment Time or share with the board some of the wonderful things that they do. I know this is for high school students, a lot of the community groups. And especially Divine Nine organizations take students around to visits for colleges. And they play such an integral role in having well-rounded students. And they really do truly make an impact in our community for the better. So I just want to invite them in and hopefully share their stories. Also, this time of year is registration for summer SAC. Dr. Latif stole my thunder a little bit talking about the summer enrichment programs because I believe some of them are available for signup now. I'm so excited that our school division is going to be able to offer things to our families, especially some of our low-income families, because summer programs are quite expensive on top of daycare and other costs. So it's nice to see us continuing to have like a third semester. For Family Engagement Nights, there's one coming up on the 26th of April. It is elementary math enrichment for parents and families. It's a virtual program. Ms. Goss, you'll probably be interested in knowing, I have seen the attendance for these Family Engagement Nights being virtual be so high because it's so easy for parents to log on from wherever. I really appreciate this shift. It's great to have things in person, but it's also fantastic to be able to have so many virtuals. So parents could attend anywhere and anytime for the benefit of themselves and their students. So thank you. Two seconds, I'm sorry. Regional Social Justice Committee meeting tomorrow and Governor's School meeting tomorrow. Thank you.
Ms. Wall?
Thanks, Dr. Latif. I just want to wish everybody, I hope everybody had a great spring break. Happy Easter, Passover, and Ramadan. All converging at the same time this year, kind of a cool thing. I want to congratulate the robotics teams that competed at Chesapeake, the first competition in Chesapeake right before spring break. There were three teams from PWCS, Eye Light, Supernova, and the Metal Jackets. And special congrats go to Eye Light for winning the Excellence in Engineering Award for their engineering design. They had several unique and novel things that they were doing with their engineering design that were awesome. And they were recognized at that regional competition for their design, which was really great. So Eye Light and Supernova qualified to go on to basically Worlds. So its first championship in Houston, there's competing as we speak. The competition will run through Saturday, so I really want to wish good luck to both teams. Eye Light comes out of Battlefield and Supernova is made out of, made up of students from across the division who want to participate in a first robotics, on a first robotics team. So I wanted to also say, this week, I was able to meet and work with a group that's looking at traffic solutions for Battlefield High School's longstanding traffic woes that have plagued the school since the beginning of its existence, having been built so close to Route 15 and having just a very short queuing road that leads into the school with a one-way, one-way in, one-way out configuration. So I feel positive about some of the work that has been done. I appreciate staff who have done that work. And now we are just going to need to move it to the next step with short-term and long-term solutions for the community. That's a community issue, not just a school issue. It affects everybody who travels in and out of our area on Route 15. Start times, I'm looking forward to the input from the surveys that have been led by the student representatives. I want to thank them for their efforts. I know this is a student-led initiative. One thing students learned through the pandemic, especially when we went to virtual school, one thing they liked, maybe the only thing they liked, was that they got more sleep. So I think it's really important to listen to the students and consider the impact on student well-being because of highest priority to me is student achievement and student success. And if adults need to adapt and accommodate, then I think that we should do that. Watching that discussion will be something I'll be doing very carefully. We've seen some really important academic data today. And I understand that while data only tells part of the story, it is important to evaluate how we are doing, to understand how we can improve. So to all students and teachers and everybody else, I leave my final thoughts with you in the words of Winston Churchill. Success is not final. Failure is not fatal. It is the courage to continue that counts.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Zargarpur?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. My spring break was the week before Prince William, so I had an opportunity to visit almost every one of my schools. At Kyle Wilson, I got to visit many different classrooms. One of the favorite ones was the kindergarten classroom with the baby chicks. I did not take one home, even though they offered. I got to visit McCullough, Lockloman, Yorkshire, Saunders. At Marshall, I got to help participate in the Booster-Thon, which was great fun. The kids did a great job running their laps, but I know they made their goals. I went to Benton and Parkside and Hilton, checked in on their construction, how things are going there. At Colgan, I got to visit some of the arts classrooms and I got to run into a birthday celebration at lunch, so that was great. At Rosa Parks, I got to watch the IB fifth-grade students make some of their presentations. And I loved how prepared they were. The kids coming out of fifth grade, going into sixth grade, you guys, you middle school teachers are so lucky, I'm just saying. Got to visit at Signal Hill. And I think that was all the schools that I hit that week. I will finish up my rounds as I can. I want to take a moment here to remember Jimmy Qualls. He was a product of Prince William County Schools. He graduated from Garfield High School. And he was the first coach, I first started teaching at Ripon Middle. But he was also the first coach in AD at Potomac High School when it was first built. He coached all kinds of, he coached basketball, he coached football. He was a winning football coach at Hilton High School. He had many championships under his belt. He just passed away on April 13th at age 77. And just a mere check on social media, seeing how many people knew this man through all this time, how many athletes he influenced, how many people he coached and helped bring them into the world of coaching as they grew up themselves. So I'd like to just, well, after he left Prince William County, he ended up going to, I believe, Stafford. And I pulled up some information here for those who are interested. His Celebration of Life will be held at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, April 23rd, at Colonial Forge High School Auditorium, for those who are interested. So I'd just like to take the last little part to give him a moment of silence, peace and love to his family and all the people who ever met this man. I hear nothing but beautiful testaments of how he influenced our students.
Thank you, Ms. Zargarpur. Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Again, congratulations to Amy Schott. I think we're going to recognize her at the next board meeting. She is a Potomac principal in now Henderson Elementary, which is a top-performing STEM school and ratings galore online if you Google Henderson Elementary for its ratings. Anyways, we have the best in Potomac. Let's see, real quick, couple of events. Because spring break, it was a short week, I didn't pull Lisa Zargarpur visits. That was impressive. Good job. There was a Military Child Breakfast on Monday at Montclair Elementary. I want to thank Ms. Davis, the coordinator of that event and the planning of that. It was a great event to be there bright and early Monday morning after spring break. Went and saw, as promised, Descendants, which was the musical at Forest Park. Want to recognize Ms. Laura Britton and Ms. Lori Spitzer-Wilk for an excellent performance. When you do a Disney production, I just want to say, you pay a lot of rights upfront to get the rights to do that show with the script. So happy to announce they made profits and we're not able to just pay for the script, but put some money aside for the next show. So that's a good sign. Also, the PTSO had their first sponsorship dinner at the Potomac High School. That was about two weeks ago. I was able to bring my mother, who was in town from Michigan. And I want to thank Supervisor Bailey for attending the event. Just want to, again, recognize our military children. As, you know, Dr. Latif mentioned earlier in the resolution, we have almost 9,000 students, almost 10%. A number of them live within the Potomac District as Quantico is in the Potomac District. So you have a lot of military families residing in Triangle, Dumfries, Montclair, et cetera. And, you know, I think this school division has done an outstanding job. You know, one, making sure for the last, you know, six years I've been advocating for that permanent military family liaison. And now that seems like a permanent fixture in our budget. So that's awesome. And, you know, from a personal level, you know, I was proud to serve on Ashland's Purple Star Committee when Ashland was one of the first elementary schools to be recognized for that. And then also, you know, I think in the spirit of patriotism, I think creating and pushing with Ms. Wall for that 9/11 committee, also just another way of our school division continuing to recognize our military families and all the contributions they've made. So thank you all. Good night.
Ms. Ralston?
Yes.
It's Board Matters. Ms. Ralston, do you have anything to add?
Not this evening.
Okay, great. We'll move on to Ms. Jackson.
Last meeting, we recognized Child Abuse Awareness Month. One in seven children in the United States will experience abuse. The impacts of child abuse will be felt throughout our lifetime and not only impacts the child, but our community as a whole. Last meeting, there were pinwheels outside the KLC, which is a national symbol for child abuse prevention. Hopefully, as a community, we can take a moment today, and always, and reflect on the different ways we can raise awareness and prevention outside the month of April. Today, we're recognizing the month of the military child. This week is Spirit Week to honor and support our military families. I am very grateful to all the schools who have taken time to recognize the service of our service members and their families. I was reviewing I was reviewing the strategic plan earlier today and I noticed that PWCS has over 6,400 military-connected students enrolled in our schools. While we offer multiple programs, such as the one that Mr. Wilk mentioned with the Purple Star designation, there are also plans to continue to support these families as we move forward in the future. Also listed in the plan are, is the importance of recognizing childhood trauma. And it also lists steps to further address this. I was lucky recently to attend the Westgate Science Fair project and I was able to listen to the wonderful students discuss their science experiments. But while I was there, I was fortunate to talk to library staff. And, you know, they talked to me about the different books that they had and I answered several of my questions. And it was just a wonderful discussion. And they were very welcoming. And what I loved most about our conversation was the absolute love that they had for those students. And I just want to take a moment and thank all library staff, including library media staff and assistants, for their time and dedication to our school communities. And I will end with a wish for everybody to have a nice evening.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, great. I want to commend Mr. Wilk for his years of commitment to the military and, and those families in his school, his district, in the culmination, Dr. McDade, with the, the military engagement officer that, that we're, we're putting in this year's budget. So I think that's very important. I'm, I'm glad you mentioned it. And again, Mr. Wilk, thank you for your commitment on this very important issue. Folks, we are in one of the best school divisions in the country. I believe that with my heart. I wouldn't be up here and doing this, certainly not for the pay, I can tell you that. Or the fun. This is, this is the, we are in among the strongest school divisions in the nation. And, and, you know, our students who came tonight, who said, strong libraries build strong students, strong instruction builds strong students, as Dr. McDade points out. And we are committed to that. You see that weave throughout the entire strategic plan. Strong academic commitment builds strong students. Strong extracurricular activities build strong students. Strong athletic programs build strong students. And strong arts programs build strong students. We have all of those here. We have all of those opportunities here for our students. And I encourage all of our families and our students to really take advantage of all of them. I encourage our parents to continue to participate in these programs, volunteer for them. Through your volunteer efforts, we make them even stronger. And we make the opportunities more enriched for each of our students. And, and PTOs, strong PTOs at some of our strong schools, some of these strong PTOs have amazing opportunities for our students, that I would encourage our PTOs to share your best practices with the PTOs across the division, you know, and, and, and find some of those great programs that are successful in elementary school X, let's try to get them over to elementary school Y. And it's just really important that we work together to do that because we can build upon one of the strongest school divisions in the nation. There is a reason why our county grows the, the rate it does. There's a reason why people come here. It is because of our great schools. Chair Wheeler knows this very well. Chair Wheeler is trying to pass the county budget over the next couple of weeks. I encourage all of you to reach out to or support the county budget. It provides much-needed support for our school division. Our General Assembly will be voting on a fight on budget in the next few weeks. I encourage everyone to reach out to their delegates and senators to say to them, support our schools. It is critical. Fund our future with your efforts down in Richmond and over at the McCord Building. I know Chair Wheeler and the Board of County Supervisors members are committed to our schools. They've recommitted year after year and they, and I'm hoping to see further, further efforts on that regard. Congratulations to all of our students. There's robotics competitions happening, science fair competitions happening, athletic events. Keep it all up, folks, and enjoy your final quarter. Thank you all. Meeting is adjourned.